Good evening, folks, and welcome to the May 14th, 2018 Planning Board Meeting in the Town of Scarborough, Maine. I'd like to call us to order this evening. Karen, will you do, I'm sorry, I'm gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
Okay.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, would you like to call the roll, please?
Mr. Dupree, Ms. Hendrickson.
Here.
Ms. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Fellows, Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Beal.
Here.
And Ms. Ogless.
Okay, we had word that Rick would be joining us a little late this evening. When he returns, please note that he would be a voting member. Next, I have the approval of the minutes for the April 5th and April 23rd meetings.
Is it moved?
Got a motion to move the April 5th and April 23rd minutes.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm going halves on that. I wasn't here for the April 23rd meeting. Stayed from that vote. Alright, item number four. Actually, I just want to make a quick note that there's a full agenda this evening. We hope we can get through it, but there is a chance that one or two of the items might not make the 10:30 PM cutoff deadline for new business, so just be aware of that. We'll kind of get a feel of how this goes as we start the evening, but I think as a consideration to everyone that's on this agenda this evening, if we try to limit our comments on our presentations, that would probably be helpful, and that way everyone can go about their business. Thank you. Number four, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance of the Town of Scarborough, Maine, Section 6, definitions in Section 17B, Higgin's Parkway District, HP-B permitted uses, conventional and planned developments. And we're gonna have Karen Martin from SEDCO kind of do a little introduction on this for us.
Thank you. So tonight, we have for you, for your consideration, some staff-initiated, some staff-initiated text amendments to the zoning ordinance, which really address some inconsistencies in the way warehousing as a use is addressed, particularly in the Higgin's Parkway. One of the things that we have seen over time is when we made some amendments to Higgin's Parkway, we've been really trying to make sure that we are clearly distinguishing Higgin's Parkway as a business zone from the industrial zone. And so one of the things that we did was try to be very careful about warehousing, because we really felt like warehousing as a standalone use was not really fitting in Higgin's Parkway. That's really an industrial use. But one of the things that happened is we did add some language in the ordinance that talked about limiting warehousing in Higgin's Parkway to 50% or less. And what we've really discovered over time, as we've been trying to work with that, is it's not really warehousing that we've been talking about. We've really been talking about storage. Warehousing as a separate use, where all you're doing is storing items. You're not doing value-added, you're not doing any production. It is storage and transportation of that, those items in and out of your facility. Well, what we found is there's a lot of uses in Higgin's Parkway that really do need storage. And we really thought that the 50% limitation doesn't really make as much sense. We don't have that same limitation in B3, where we talk about storage as an accessory use. And what we're really trying to do, the bottom line of what we're trying to do, is apply the same standards that we apply to storage from the B3 into Higgin's Parkway. So what we want, what we plan on doing is recommending the, there's an item 10 in the permitted use that does speak specifically to limiting warehousing in Higgin's Parkway to 50% or less of the building. We want to take that out and not allow warehousing in Higgin's Parkway at all. We do want to allow storage as an accessory use, again treating Higgin's Parkway the same way that we're treating B3. And so the way that we're gonna go about doing that, the way we're suggesting that we do that, is really two things. One, let's eliminate item 10, because it's really not necessary. Higgin's Parkway already allows for accessory uses, and storage can absolutely be an accessory use. So we're just streamlining the ordinance and making it easier for the applicants to understand and easier for us to administer. Now, the second piece that we wanted to do, to sort of avoid this confusion for other zones, is actually include a definition of warehousing. We don't currently have a definition of warehousing, and so what you have before you is that definition. And we also went further and did a definition of distribution, because those two are often used interchangeably and together. So again, what we're really trying to do is streamline Higgin's Parkway, allowing folks who are doing allowable uses the same courtesy, the same standards that we apply in the B3. So warehousing as a standalone use, still not allowed. But storage for a company that does production, or value-added, or does some other type of use, which is the primary use, but also has storage, that's still, that's okay. We just feel we don't need item 10 that sort of gums up the definition and gums up the understanding of what's really happening in that zone. So try to be in the interest of all the other applicants that are here. I think I'm gonna stop there and ask if there are any questions with regard to that.
Thank you very much. Jay, did you have anything to supplement?
No, I think Karen hit it on the head pretty good, so.
Okay.
I think we'll leave it at that.
So this is a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed changes. So at this time, I'd like to welcome any member of the public up here that is, wants to, or has a desire to speak on this issue. Please approach the podium now. Seeing now, I'll close the public comment section of this and see if the board has any comments that they'd like to contribute to the discussion.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if the storage is confined to indoor storage? Or if there will be any outdoor storage?
Outdoor storage is a separately defined item in our ordinance. So this is really about indoor storage of materials, as Karen said, made or produced, or somehow product added or value-added onsite.
Good, because I could see a lot of unintended consequences with that.
Outdoor storage has its own separate.
Okay, and then my other question has to do with by, by changing the definition to warehousing and storage, have we thought about any unintended consequences with respect to B3?
So I'll just start, and then Karen can jump in. The current language in the industrial and light industrial talks about warehousing and storage, so that is a current language. We have, subsequent to submitting this to council for first reading, have given that some thought. Did receive similar comment at council level, so we're actually proposing to potentially strike the word "storage" altogether and just call it warehousing, rather than warehousing and storage, because that does create a little bit of confusion, and then the definition of warehousing clearly talks about it being the storage of goods. So I think that's streamlined, but.
And again, we're taking out the word, we're taking out the use in Higgin's Parkway that talks about warehousing.
Okay, so in the proposed zoning ordinance that's in front of us, should it actually be amended, where we have the two definitions at the top of the page? So we should just say warehousing, or should it say still warehousing and storage?
We're proposing, it's a fine line, and probably it would be fine to leave storage in. But I think for clarification, you know, the suggestion would be, let's go ahead and take storage out. When we presented to the council, I think there were some comments like, what does this mean? Are you still doing, you know, warehousing in, in Higgin's Parkway? We wanted to make it clear that we are not doing warehousing in Higgin's Parkway.
And the 50% threshold, that's by square footage only, correct? Is that by interior square footage?
It's, the way the ordinance reads right now, it's, does not exceed 50% of the floor area of the principal use.
Floor area of the principal use.
So again, it's, we're sort of, in two places under permitted uses, saying you can have accessory uses. We say you can have accessory uses. And then this Higgin's Parkway has a secondary statement of warehousing as an accessory use.
Thank you. I like that it's staff-initiated. Good job.
Yes, Rachel.
Yeah, I had the same sort of question. And that, as I look at the definition of warehousing and storage, no matter what we do with the title there, it still says a structure of building where goods and material are stored specifically for distribution to other sites and locations. And there's not a grand distinction in action between distribution and warehousing. The, there's, you may have to ask people what your intent is, but I was under, I think I got the impression that the concept of storage is the material is there. It may be being used by the business and transferred into some other product. In other words, it may be used into manufacturing. And the purpose of storage is a transient sort of nature while the material is worked on, which is different than warehousing, but this definition says specifically for distribution to other sites and locations, which is exactly what distribution already has been defined as.
Right. So we've done two things. One, partly because the definition uses the word "distribution" in it, we went ahead and continued to define "distribution." So those are, those are two pieces of the same definition. And the other piece of that is, and it could be that it's a word choice. It may be instead of specifically, maybe we should have used the word exclusively. So what we're talking about is when you have a building or use that does nothing else except warehousing, except being a storage place for product, and then also doing distribution. And in the industrial zone, both of those uses are listed. And again, we just wanted to cover our bases, since neither of those are actually currently in the definitions list. And I looked like Jay wanted to add.
Yeah, I guess that was the point I just wanted to make, was to be clear that the word district, when you look in the industrial district, the light industrial district, under permitted uses, there's currently, you know, number whatever it is, is distribution. And then following that is warehousing and storage as a separate use. So they're already identified as separate uses. What we tried to do in creating the definition, we sort of looked at both sort of national publications for definitions, as well as other local definitions. We realized that there's some duplicity in word choices here, where sometimes it's the noun, and sometimes it's the verb. But certainly, if there's other, I think that's.
I get the sense of the intent. I'm not sure this wording actually clears it up and clears up the distinction. I have no dispute about what you're trying to do. But, you know, I go back to being an English teacher and looking at this and saying, I would be great question marks and little note in red pen that says, exactly what do you mean by this?
Right. So excellent point, and I think we've struggled with trying to make sure that we're using that as well. So again, there, I think we could do some more clarification of that use. But as long as we're, as long as everybody is understanding what the intent of it is, I think we can clarify those, the definition.
Well done.
I've got one follow-up, and I don't know if you have the answer to this, but when you were going through the definitions of what warehousing versus a storage is, is there an actual timeframe associated with it? Whereas if a product is sitting on a shelf for more than a two-year period, is it now considered storage? Is that maybe the finer line? Have you come across any definitions that contain timeframes in them?
I didn't, and I, Jay did a lot of the background research on that definition, so.
I did not, and, you know, I did not find sort of the definition. It's really, again, sort of that principle of use being something's coming in, sitting there for whatever that duration is, nothing's really happening with it, and then it's going back out. And I think a lot of this, you know, I think when we talk about distribution and warehousing in the industrial area, we're thinking a lot about truck traffic, and I think that was, and I think maybe Karen touched on this a little bit, you know, that's sort of the, I think was the, behind the original intent is the Higgin's Parkway is really designed to be a jobs creator of a, you know, frankly, the original vision was quite a bit different, but it still, it still does the intent. Warehousing, distribution, typically you're looking at a big metal building that has a guy or two running a forklift, you know. It's not, it's certainly something that's needed, but I think that wasn't the intent for the Higgin's Parkway.
And I think, you know, the other thing that we're definitely relying on is the design standards are the unique feature within Higgin's Parkway that helps us distinguish uses that would normally, you would think, oh, that's really industrial. So we've tried to walk that fine line of, there are some uses with the appropriate design standards can function perfectly well in the Higgin's Parkway without turning it into an industrial park, per se. So we continue to walk that fine line and try to make it easier for folks and for us to administer, but still keeping really a distinction between industrial and Higgin's Parkway.
Thank you. So, you know, in general, I think, you know, we're dealing with a pretty straightforward concept that we can all grasp, and then we find out wordsmithing can be part of the devil's in the details bit of this. But also just a reminder to this board that, you know, if you put it into practice, there's always a chance to go back and fine-tune it based on what's being seen on the, on the ground versus what the intent really is on this, so. And this is just an opportunity for us to give advice back to the council on their final work that needs to be done on this, so. Did you have something to add, Roger?
No.
No, okay. So I would just say that in general, I think, pass along that we're in favor of what we're seeing here with some, some wordsmithing work maybe ahead of us, but in all, we're relatively comfortable with the change.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next thing on here is, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance of the Town of Scarborough, as presented. This is the Crossroads Holdings LLC, L R P C, and Jay, would you like to prime us on this one?
Sure, I'll just give you a brief intro. The Downs team is here, the Crossroads Holdings team, I should say, is here to make a presentation. This is really their initiative, but as some planning board members may know, this item has gone before, when they started initially thinking about some of these changes, they had at least one, I think it was actually two conversations with the Long Range Planning Committee before putting forward formal language to council and now ultimately the planning board for consideration. So there has been some vetting by at least the Long Range Planning, and we're interested to hear what the planning board members had to say. So without further ado, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Renan?
Thank you. Good evening, Dan Bacon with Girl Palmer. And on behalf of Crossroads Holdings LLC, as Mr. Chase introduced, the Downs team has been busy. We've been before you a few times now with our master planning process, as called for with the Crossroads District, and we've also been to the Long Range Planning Committee, really as we've shaped the, shaped the vision in the plan for this large piece of property in the center of the community. Over the many months, we've been getting input from not only the planning board, but other local boards and committees, SEDCO in particular, around what is the right, really the right balance of uses and development activities on the Downs. And we've been using the zone to the best of our ability to go through the master planning process. And we're really trying to balance a lot of different goals for the project and for the property. And as we dig into it, and as we understand market demand, and we understand infrastructure costs, and what's sort of ripe for development in the near term versus the longer term, we've identified some, some uses and some zoning changes that we've brought before the Long Range Planning Committee and the Town Council for first reading. Really, we think to kind of round out the zoning and put the right development package together for, for the property. So we have two different sets of amendments. There's what we would consider kind of fairly modest amendments that are text amendments, which is I think this item on your agenda, and then the next item is actually a zoning map update. So I'm gonna touch on the text amendments. And I think the primary, the lead proposed text change, or set of text changes, is around allowing for some new uses, allowing for some of the things you just talked about under the last item on your agenda, allowing for manufacturing, allowing for research, light industrial, really more kind of economic development, employment-type uses that can, can round out the project and really provide a good balance of development, not just residential, not just kind of cultural, but also more of that economic development, kind of light industrial-type uses. And so there's a proposal in your package around allowing for these uses. I'm just gonna jump to a slide here. In a particular, for whatever reason, my computer's not changing slides, but I'll keep talking about it. In a particular area on the site, really to kind of limit where those types of development activities occur. And that would be up towards the Payne Road area of the property. And that's the area of the property that we see as really more of kind of the business end of the property, the portion of the property closest to the highway in terms of mobility for employees coming to the site. Some levels of truck traffic can be best accommodated off of Payne Road going to the Turnpike. It's also the area of the property that's kind of close to those types of uses. There's the Gin Road area that is more kind of industrial in nature. So we're proposing in that area of the property, there would be standards around only being allowed within 1,450 feet of Payne Road, and also with some fairly robust buffers to residential zone, to the east, to a 250-foot buffer to Payne Road, as well as a 250-foot buffer to Downs Road. So it really would be, these types of uses really would be kind of isolated and buffered on that portion of the property. We're proposing this, actually taking cues from the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan actually calls for kind of manufacturing, technology, research-type uses to be allowed in this district. They aren't allowed right now, but the comprehensive plan allows for those. And there's really very strong kind of market demand in Scarborough, but also in greater Portland for these, these types of uses. I think there's less than a 2% vacancy throughout the region in terms of these types of uses. So we think there's a need. We think it's a positive, would be a positive change for Scarborough in terms of getting more of the region's fair share of these types of uses. And we think the package that the Long Range Planning Committee endorsed and the Town Council supported at first reading is a balanced proposal that kind of buffers those uses, has them kind of fit into the property, but in a limited way, and with significant controls by the planning board. So that's the primary kind of text request before you and your package. A second one is around allowing for a gas station allowance only, again at the Payne Road end of the property, and specifically within 1,000 feet of the intersection of Payne Road and the Downs Road. And we see this as a, an amenity for the project, an amenity for some of the uses that I just mentioned in terms of convenience and, and use. And we also see it as, you know, a way to prevent kind of traffic impacting the larger community. That we anticipate the Downs will have some destination-type uses, and ultimately some office, some commercial that's drawing from throughout the region, or maybe out of state. So having a gas station amenity really can be complimentary and also prevent people kind of driving around town to find a fueling station. So with this amendment, like the last one, we're being very kind of specific about allowing for it only in a very limited portion of the project, similar to how the town is allowed for gas stations in other areas, measuring from a distance around intersections, so that they don't just occur, say, throughout the project or kind of happen along, gradually along Payne Road. The, another component of the proposed changes is around construction activity and earthwork on the project. As the planning board is aware, development projects are typically allowed to, you know, obviously do site work. They're allowed to excavate material from their site and use them on their site, store material during construction. That's customary, as long as projects are following proper erosion control and state and local requirements around that. The Downs is a pretty unique site, where it's much larger than your typical development project. And so we thought it was, would be wise and useful to include some specific standards around how construction activity can occur, to give the applicant direction on how that can be managed, to give a butter's some protection around construction activity, to give the planning board some, some guidance and some leverage on how construction activity occurs. So we've included some performance standards around that, so that there can be excavation on the site that, to extract material that can be used on other portions of the site for construction, that we think can reduce overall impacts of construction, and not trucking from other parts of the community, but rather have the project be fairly self-sufficient in terms of material extraction and storage, and really to, and to provide some guidance around how that happens. So we included operations plan, we included some best practices that when a project comes through, the planning board can review that and understand and kind of condition how that operation occurs on the site. how that operation occurs on the site. And lastly, I think the fourth text amendment or kind of topic around the text amendments is updating some of the buffer standards, both along the main roads. Right now, within the Crossroads District, there isn't the same kind of landscaping requirements along the main streets, along Route 1, Higgin's Parkway and Payne Road as the adjacent zones. So the B3 along Route 1 requires a 15-foot landscape buffer. The Crossroads District doesn't include that. Similar is true on Higgin's Parkway and Payne Road, even though the Crossroads District is next to those same zoning districts. So we've included language so that the streetscape or the landscaping standards are the same, depending on the street that the project faces. And we've also proposed a change to the buffering between the Crossroads District and commercial zones. Right now, there's a 50-foot buffer requirement between the Crossroads District Development and Commercial Zones, which isn't typically required of between commercial districts. So we're proposing to eliminate that buffer requirement and have the Planning Board condition buffers at the master plan level. You reviewed the master plan for Phase 1, and part of that is buffering. So rather than having sort of a carte blanche 50-foot buffer regardless of the two different zones and land uses next door to each other, we're recommending that be left to the master planning process because in some cases, the project would actually want to interface with the development that's next door. For example, Enterprise Business Park is in a butter, and there's actually plans and intentions of interconnecting with Enterprise Business Park and rather than buffering between the two. And we think that that would be a positive change to provide more flexibility on the interconnections between this project and some neighbors. So I think that's an overview of the zoning text amendments, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have, I'm sorry, jumped the gun there. This is also a public hearing, so is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in relation to this topic? Please approach the podium, state your name and address. Seeing that, I'm going to close the public comment portion of this. And does anyone from the board have any questions or comments regarding, Ms. Rachel?
Yeah, Dan, I'm looking at the gas station, and there are actually two gas stations fairly close on Payne Road. How far away are they from where this would be proposed?
Probably the closest one is closer to Exit 42, and I'm not exactly sure how far away it is. I think it's probably a third of a mile, something like that, I'm going to guess.
And on the other side, on Gorham Road, the Cumberland Farms?
Yeah, that's a good bit further away. Going to hazard a guess that that's a mile and a half, but mile. But I haven't conducted those measurements, so those are ballmarks for you.
I think what I was thinking of is I looked at some of the things that were going to be here is that we're talking short-term and long-term. In other words, as we start to look at things like pet care facilities, the gas station with a, with perhaps a deli attached or a convenience store, they're going to get their most business or start to get businesses once the houses are built and the park is built, the industrial area is built. So to me, I'd be really interested in how that's being phased in because I can see the need for a gas station. I can also see the need for it closer to what could be the town's center, because there actually are two gas stations on Payne Road that aren't that far apart. I also saw something here that said, under the motor vehicle repair and service, the opportunity to relocate existing businesses off primary corridors. Again, that's both a good thing and a, is that new businesses that are coming or is it businesses that you're thinking about that could eventually leave us with empty stores on Route 1? And that's a, that becomes a concern. So it's less than what you're going to do with it, than it's how it's going to be done. And I understand we're looking right now at what your proposals are, you know, what the changes would be, but I do have some concerns about the how.
Sure. Happy to comment, or I can let the board continue to provide feedback. In terms of the proposed use changes, there's really two buckets from our perspective. There's primary and secondary, particularly around manufacturing and technology, and that's, those are the primary amendments that we see as critical for the project and for the community. We really want to create the opportunity for technology, innovation, a kind of manufacturing district, park, we used to say park, but I feel like that's an old term, so district. And there's really strong demand for that, for manufacturing space, for kind of innovation, technology, of course breweries are popular. We don't think we're going to move Bayside down here, but maybe there would be some amount of that. But we, those are, that's the primary goal, is to provide new contemporary space for economic development, employment, high tax revenue and generators, and creating activity that leads to housing and vice versa, and also leads to other commercial development. So that's at the forefront, that's sort of the primary goal with these changes. Secondary is there are some more kind of light industrial service type uses that we think are appropriate to be interspersed with those. You mentioned auto repair, and that's not to kind of steal them away from their sites that they exist today, but the fact of the matter is there is not a lot of space in the town of Scarborough for those types of operations to, say, leave Route 1, to find a new space that maybe is more affordable or more appropriate than Route 1. Route 1's modernizing in a way that everybody knows that is calling for different types of uses than auto repair and that aren't maybe fitting in anymore to certain areas of Route 1, say Oak Hill or Dunston. So this is a secondary allowance that would provide a home for those uses that are maybe no longer the highest and best use. Similar to that would be a pet care facility that's, we don't think we're going to attract a bunch of pet care facilities. It's just more of an accessory type use that makes sense perhaps with a lot of activity within the district or out of convenience. So that's, to try to break it down, those are the way we've gone about kind of putting forward these amendments, primary and secondary.
I noticed one other thing down here on page five. One of the things you're looking at is relief from commercial design standards. Could you explain that, please?
Right now, the entire, commercial design standards apply to the entire district, and that was, I think, probably by design because there weren't sort of more of the manufacturing, light industrial uses allowed for. So some of these uses are hard to put a cupola on or a peaked roof or kind of have comply with what's customarily found in the commercial design standards. So the proposal is in, for these specific uses to not have to provide strict adherence to the commercial design standards because often their building design doesn't correspond as well as typical commercial development.
So essentially, are you looking for blanket relief or are you looking for a way to ask for waivers?
We're looking to have that be addressed during the master planning process by the Planning Board. I mean, somewhat similar to discussions around kind of the first residential phase, you know, what is the character of Phase 1, what's the aesthetic of that? We'd look for, to work with the Planning Board at that level on, you know, what's the design theme of, say, an innovation district or a technology district? And can it, can that be created through the master planning process rather than following the commercial design standards that are fairly blanket, that are maybe not crafted for these types of, this type of, these types of buildings or this type of development?
Given that this is coming in, this is going on, would it be better, do you think, for the town to really look at the commercial design standards as a whole and to start to examine them with a view towards changing as the, as the building, as the buildings in and the uses in Scarborough do change? Might that be an approach to follow rather than on an individual development?
It's potential approach. I mean, that's, I think that's a more of a town discussion as to, okay, is that going to be a short-term initiative that the town's going to proceed with, or is that a longer-term initiative? And does that apply to this project only, or is that more of a town-wide question? I mean, I think Higgin's Parkway is an example of somewhere in between the design standards and what we're talking about. I think, you know, there's been some good, good buildings put up that are, you know, somewhere, again, somewhere between New England architecture and kind of, kind of metal buildings. So I don't, I don't know specifically. I think it depends on what the town wants to do.
I think it'd be good here too, just to
Thank you.
to say at this point that, you know, where we have the Crossroads District, it is just encompassing the Downs property, and I think what they're looking for is kind of a, an outside framework, knowing full well that they're going to be in front of us again with their master plans and with their requests as they go in the architecture. And of course, they're extremely sensitive to the market demands and what will be changing. And ultimately, I think this board has that flexibility to keep reconsidering these items as they come. However, at the outset, they want, they want that initial framework to be able to work with their potential suitors for any of the properties that they're developing. So they just kind of keep, you know, that context in front of us as we go through these, this language. Jay, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think that the comments that Ms. Henderson were bringing up were brought forward during our discussion with the Long Range Planning Committee as well, and I know as part of that, one of the sort of areas of discussion where really, you know, the discussion around relief from the commercial design standards is really sort of in that one pocket, as Mr. Bacon described, so a northeasterly pocket of the property, I think I've got that about right. And as I recall, the Long Range Planning Committee in discussion with the Crossroads team really talked about ensuring there was like a 100-foot buffer around the area, so it almost becomes an island of industrial or light industrial type activities rather than sort of having buildings that might not have to meet those design standards right next to other buildings or parts of the overall development scheme that would just work, what that's worth.
I just unplugged it and plugged it back, Dan. I should have done that 15 minutes ago. But as Mr. Chase indicated, this shows the location that we're talking about up, I know it doesn't show you the whole plan on your screen, but the image in the bottom left is, shows that quadrant of the property up by Payne Road, and, you know, really the kind of a concept of what a district or subdivision might look like, and then example-type buildings.
Do we have any more comments?
I guess first I'm wondering how often it is that developers get to initiate ordinance and zoning changes? I mean, how often does that happen?
So there's a provision in the ordinance and property owners are, have the ability to bring forward zoning amendments? So how often does it happen? Upon occasion, I think at least annually we see one, and sometimes there's, like this one, you know, early cooperation between staff. I think one we'll see here coming up later tonight, Blue Bird Self-Storage is a, is sort of a good example of one that came forward within the last year or so. Happens upon occasion.
Okay. So can, can you remind us too of the process that's happening as far as the Planning Board will have an opportunity to weigh in on master planning? And I guess, do we equate that to sort of like a subdivision review kind of a thing where we're looking? But I know that this, we're talking about hundreds of acres here, and I guess if we miss something in master planning, is there going to be another opportunity for us to weigh in? Because I think it feels a little bit like the tail wagging the dog in this process so far. So I guess, yeah, the, where would the Planning Board have the opportunity to weigh in if, for example, the relief from commercial design standards was blanket? And, yeah, where do we have the opportunity to weigh in?
So just, just so we're clear, when we're talking about relief from commercial design standards, you're really only talking about it in that one pocket of areas, not blanket for the whole parcel. I just want to be sure that that's clear. So if that is a relief that's granted, then that would be part of the zoning ordinance and, but as, so I think your initial question was sort of a reminder of the process.
Yeah.
The Crossroads Plan Development District definitely has one of our more elaborate review processes, given that it is 500 plus minus acres under one common ownership. That was, so back in 2013 when it was approved, there's really sort of, I guess I don't even know how many steps there are, so I'll just sort of start at the beginning. There's the, what starts with the preliminary infrastructure plan, overall conceptual master plan for the entirety of the property, and that's a very high-level review and essentially to ensure that development doesn't happen at a piecemeal level so that, you know, you don't potentially develop one section that then cuts off access to other, otherwise available lands or doesn't sort of think about utility corridors or connections and those sorts of things. From that overall conceptual master plan, which sort of encompasses all the holdings, the applicant is then able to zoom in on master plans of 50 acres, pods of 50 acres. So as board members, you know, right now, we're working through the first pod or phase, whatever we're calling it, which is the residential component down by Phase 1, and that has a sort of a master plan component to it before you get to your site plan and subdivision review processes. So there's really sort of a zooming in, if you will, and so that would happen with each subsequent phase. So when and if the phase, what has been referred to as Phase 2, this sort of light industrial areas we're talking about now, I think it's been identified largely as being the next phase that we may see. Of course, things change as it goes, but at least at this time, that's our expectation. That would start with a master plan review, and the board would start with a discussion about whether they're the appropriate space and bulk standards here, so.
So if we don't, if we don't give sort of like the relief from commercial design standards now, would we still have the opportunity to do it for, when the pod is being developed? Or is, are we talking about that pod right now?
So nope, right now, this is, you're talking about the zoning. The Crossroads, we're not talking about, I mean, there are, within the zoning, there are different pods, but right now, what the zoning says is there's a standard that says commercial design standards apply to all development in the Crossroads. So there's a current standard that would make it applicable, and now the board, like with all projects, can waive provisions, but it does, the starting point would be we hit the standards rather than, again, where I think they're talking more light industrial, industrial type activities in this area.
Yeah, and I understand what Mr. McGee said about, you know, allowing the flexibility for the developers to attract certain, certain businesses by being able to be nimble with the design standards. But I feel like they are crafted for a reason, so I'm not sure why we would, why we would waive them at this point. I guess I would also agree with Rachel. Thank you. I was looking at the gas station. I was looking at the gas station regarding the fact that, well, let me ask, is the gas fueling station one of the primary or secondary sort of buckets that you were talking about?
I was talking about those really on the light industrial.
Okay.
That's a different bucket.
Okay.
It's a third bucket.
So, I guess-
That's a, go ahead.
The gas station seems superfluous in that it's not really a high tax revenue area. It doesn't have a, you know, it's not a high jobs sort of area that we're going to try to attract to the town. And it just seems like a low return on investment, given the potential environmental issues that would be around the spills that happen on a daily basis in this area, knowing that we are fairly close to some very environmentally sensitive and carefully mapped wetlands in this area. So, I, I would not necessarily be, I, I was disappointed, I guess, to see such a large develop, gas sta, you know, fueling station there, knowing, as Rachel said, there is one on each end of the, the intersections on that section of road. And then with respect to performance standards for earthwork, material extraction and construction activities, I, I see that you're suggesting some performance standards, but, but I'm not sure that it goes far enough. For example, the performance standards that you're suggesting, for example, 15B, notwithstanding contrary provisions, excavation may occur below the seasonal high water table for the purpose of creating water features within the development project. And I, I guess by water features, I'm wondering if you mean stormwater ponds and the like? Or if you've even thought of having a de-watering plan? And I guess I'll stop there and let you respond because I have a few more things on the excavation.
Sure. We are, we are thinking about stormwater facilities, also other water features like a, you know, a pond for aesthetic purposes, for habitat purposes. So, we don't have a specific plan in mind, but as for all of those items and, you know, the, we tried to build these standards to provide the planning board and DEP a lot of oversight in terms of, we're not trying to, we want to meet all applicable regulations in, in doing these types of things so that you have a lot of oversight and leverage in terms of these activities and how that excavation occurs.
Yeah, I guess I'd need, I'd need more detail. I think we're missing some de-watering details. I think we're also missing where the excavation would be planned. I'd, I definitely want to have a detailed plan there. And maybe you've already had to do this for your DEP landfill, I'm sorry, land mining permit, but it's definitely something that I think the town should weigh on, in on where it's going to be stockpiled and where the digging will, will occur.
That would be part of this planning process that would be presented to the planning board. So, we haven't gotten that far? We need to have guidance around that?
I'd like to also just, yeah, this is about the zoning and what's allowed on the site rather than where and when and how we conduct it, is whether or not it's a, it's even allowed on the CPZD zone, CPD zone.
So, have we, have we then, as far as like the inventory, the site inventory, have we mapped sand and gravel aquifers, wetlands and the like? Because all of that would be, and if I'm missing it, you know, on the, maybe it's already on the G drive or, or something like that, the, that we have, but I haven't seen it yet. So, if somebody could point me to where that is, that has the inventory of where everything is so far, that would be fantastic. And I, and I get that, I guess I just feel in general that these performance standards don't go far enough to make sure that there is appropriate provisions and because there's a lot of mining activity that's going on in other communities, that becomes very contentious and very litigious. And so, I'd want us to pay very close attention to the material extraction and earthwork standard.
Right. And this is, just to be clear, these allowances are only for development and use occurring on site? This isn't a gravel pit for-
Nope. I totally get it. But you've got 500 acres there.
Exportation.
That's going to be a lot to develop. And we've already said that's as big as the peninsula in the old port. So, it's, it's pretty significant. And we'd like to make sure that not only de-watering, but erosion and sedimentation controls in the main, that statute is complied with. And I'm wondering what we're, what you're talking about under 15C when it says, "Shall comply with a site plan and operations plan." What are you, you know, do we have a template for what that's going to look like? Is it a DEP template?
Yeah, I think that's what you're, in a few of your earlier comments asking for.
Yep.
You know, when this language is allowed for, then at time of planning board application, we submit a site plan to show, okay, these are the locations where extraction's occurring, these are the locations where material is stored, this is the erosion control plan, these are the de-watering plans, all of the operations plans that go along with that activity. So, this is laying the fra, the framework for-
Yep.
...a submission to the planning board.
I guess what I'm seeing is a lot of other towns are dealing with this right now and may have already, I just, I mean, I don't want us to have to recreate the wheel. So, maybe could we go to Cumberland or Wyndham or others to find out where, where mining and extraction has been an issue? And then last, I guess, 15D, where it says, "Any deviation and changes to the operations plan must be approved in advance by the planning director." If the planning board has to review and approve it, why wouldn't changes go back to the planning board?
Yeah, I think the proposal was to start with the planning director. If the planning director wasn't comfortable in making those changes, they can always-
Okay. Could we reflect that as such?
Bring it to the planning board.
Yeah, that would be good to reflect. You know, I guess that would be my recommendation to do that. And then, I had one other, but it's escaped me. So, I'll, I'll pass and I'll let you know if I think of it.
Roger, do you have any, any advices?
I can appreciate where my colleague is coming from with her knowledge about all these things, but my, I'm inclined to accept most of these things right now because this is a long-phased project. And I know you're struggling to try and figure out the best, you know, what, what's going to fit there best and what's, you know, what the market's going to be and, and things such as that. As an example, with the, with the service station, is that a definite or could that, you could possibly, my, my impression is you want that flexibility in case you want to put it there, but it may not be there.
That's true. And there's, there's beyond just serving users in the project or motorists along Payne Road. There are some catalyst projects or catalyst users that could go on this site that may demand a service station be part of the project.
Yeah.
And they're of significance that we don't want to have, we don't want to turn them away in light of, of that limitation. So, we tried to be very kind of balanced and specific about this, where it's provided for, but it's provided for in the, in a limited location, in a location that we think does the least harm on the site. And we really wouldn't want it in the core. We really wouldn't want it down on Route One. You know, the Payne Road location makes the most sense for a variety of reasons. And it, and it's, it could be a really important component to other development that I think the town would be really glad to see and proud of.
So, I mean, you're working with SECOP, you're working with the planning department, and I'm inclined to give you the flexibility at this stage because we're going to be visiting, I mean, it's evident already, you've been before us and other, other committees in town already on numerous occasions for different things. So, it's almost like a feeling out process to see what you can do and what's going to be able to work there to make the most sense for everybody. So, I'm inclined to, you know, go along with this at this point, recognizing that, you know, we're going to be looking at all this stuff later on anyways.
Thank you, Roger. I too, I'll just throw my two cents in, you know, because when we look at this and what we're trying to do here with the zoning, it, to me, the real question that we should be asking ourselves as a board, as a public, and, and this is going to go before the council, before any action actually takes place, correct? This is going to be up on, we're here to provide some comments and for the council to consider. I, you know, as I look at this, take that 30,000-foot view level, the real question here is, do we want in this area, this zone on this property, do we want to allow things like pet care, a gasoline station? And they, that's the question we're asking ourselves, are these some of the allowed uses we want to see in that portion of this development? And I don't think it's out of character to put a gas station that's actually right across the street from another gas station. It doesn't seem to disrupt the character of the area of town anyways because there's a gas station right nearby. So, as I look at this, I don't think it's anything that's out of the ordinary. I don't, I think we, we get so many bites at this apple as we go. The one thing I would, I would tend to agree with, with, I believe with Robin's comments, was the commercial design standards. And, you know, I, I would be more comfortable seeing, I think I'd probably be more comfortable seeing you guys request waivers than just to flat out say you don't need them. And that, that's just kind of a gut inclination behind how, you know, and unless there's a really good reason to say commercial design standards should not be considered here, we've all seen the, the projects you're proposing and they're, they're great. They look fantastic. You're doing a good job. We get it. But I think to ask us to just put aside all commercial standards, not entirely comfortable with it. That's just a personal feeling. But I would say that I think it'd be very open to more of a waiver process or more, you know, or if I at least had a good, a specific, you know, argument as why we can't comply with all the commercial design standards right off the bat, you know? That, that would be just my personal feedback on what I'm seeing here. As far as the things with, you know, the proposed earthwork, you know, I understand it's a big site, you don't want to, you know, you want to have a spot to work on there. And currently, it's just not permitted. And it makes sense to me that you want it to be permitted there for specifically this use and no others. And I think you've done a good job limiting how you would use the earthwork area specifically for this site. So, it's not going to be dragged from this site to other parts of town and other developments that you're working with. It's not what it's for. So, I, I'm okay, I'm comfortable with that aspect of this. So, at that point, I think I'll leave my comments there. I'd like to give a more clear sense to the council of our overall sentiment on what's being asked of us, which is, do these proposed uses, are these things that we could see happening here in this district as far as what would be allowable? You know, just a quick shrivel. I mean, I, I think what I'm seeing proposed for possible uses on the property are, are fine from what I'm seeing. Yes, go ahead.
Just a question on those, our commercial design standards.
Yes.
If, if we don't, you know, offer you some relief on that right now, do you see that as inhibiting your effort to market?
Well, I think there's kind of two things. One is, I think some of the, the uses proposed can, can and will willingly meet the design standards. I mean, there's going to be some technology companies that want to really have a great building, a strong presence and, and would have no trouble meeting design standards. I think there's some others that are still valuable uses that would be in a more kind of light industrial setting that the board may want to be approving, but it's not going to meet all of the commercial design standards. And having some flexibility there, I think, is going to benefit everyone. I, from past experience, have seen some times where you like the project, you think the, the building elevations did the best they could for the use that it is. It's kind of contemporary and it doesn't meet the design standards that are asking for maybe more New England-style this or, you know, cedar siding that. So, this isn't trying to get away from high building value and important users. It's trying to be kind of realistic around a manufacturing, technology, kind of more in light industrial area that can be compensated with buffering or it can be compensated with just different architectures. So, it's not so much around cheaper design or any of that type of thing. And the other component of it is, if it says you have to meet the design standards in the zoning district, zoning standards aren't waivable typically when a site plan standard is. So, in the town's site plan ordinance or other town's site plan ordinances, that's an ordinance typically where you can grant waivers more easily or at all versus zoning. So, if there's going to be a waiver provision that should be built in in a way that is sort of outside the zoning in the site plan to give you some discretion, and I think that's why I was offering the master plan process. We can't go to site plan without a master plan approval. So, more than any other zone in this town, the planning board has a lot of say and input and kind of control at the master plan stage on any part of this project. But this part in particular, where you can say, "These are some design criteria," or "These are architectural standards you need to meet," they can be different than design standards. They can be customized for the nature of this area. So, I think that provides an opportunity, a really good opportunity, to come up with the right design criteria for the type of activities we're talking about that kind of fits versus trying to make the design standards fit something it's, they're not really designed to fit.
Thank you. Yes.
So, Nick, looking at the first page of the memo that's provided, it looks like there are five amendments that are required. Updating the boundaries, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. Allowing for manufacturing, I'm in agreement with all the, the proposed uses except for the relief from commercial standards. The third one, I'm, I'm not in agreement with the gas fuel station, but others have said that they are. Four, establishing controls for construction activities, that one needs work, I believe. And then I would be in agreement with the fifth one.
It's a, actually kind of a helpful way to go through this. Rachel, do you have some guidance on?
Yeah, I'm pretty much tracking where Robin's coming from and the district boundaries. I'm in agreement with the allowing for manufacturing, research, light industrial. I'm in agreeing with the gas or fuel station. I, I would, I guess I would have to say not at this time. So, if that has to be taken as a no, then that's what it is. But it's, it's a not at, not at this time. The control, controls for construction activities, I do have one concern, and that is around the, the creation of water features. And it seems to me if somebody, if the, if the folks want to create a water feature as part of a landscaping plan, then they would come to us with a, a way to do that and we would, at that point, consider a waiver. And I don't, I don't know, I don't, I'm not an expert like Robin is on taking a look at excavations and high water tables and everything else. But I think a water feature may have a very good role in the landscaping and the, the presentation of the whole project. But that's a case of, so come to us and say, "I want to put in a water feature and this is how I need to do it." And then, otherwise, the rest of the construction activities are fine. And adjusting the landscape and buffering requirements of the CPD district, I'm in favor. That's fine.
Okay. Roger, do you have some guidance for me on this?
My guidance for you? I'm, I'm actually, I don't have a problem with any of those right now because I feel confident that, you know, we're going to, we're going to revisit almost all of these things at some point in the future. And I think at this stage, they're still working this out to try and figure out what's, what's going to work best for this. As far as that industrial area, that's isolated from almost the rest of the property. I, I would venture to say most people who are going to be living in that whole area may not even see it, pay attention to it if it comes to stay. So, I, I'm, I'm inclined not to restrict them in terms of what they're trying to do at this stage. And we could, I believe we can go back later on if we need to, to make any, any changes or adjustments.
Thank you. It's probably a good point. If there are no real standards, we probably could implement, you know, require more out of you at the end of it if we didn't like something or go the other way, which is you guys would argue that there's no standards and you could put whatever you want there. So, I think that's the tricky part of this. So, I am in agreement with Roger on virtually all of your five points here, you know, with, again, outlining my one concern about those design standards, understanding to- again, outlining my one concern about those design standards, understanding too, that, you know, you guys are looking for flexibility, which I believe you should have in, in that section of this project. So, I guess for Karen, who is going to take very good notes on this, our collective membership here is largely in agreement on three of the five points, with some reservations from, half of the board members, half of the current board members present for the gas, and for the construction material activities, the earthwork material activities, would be what we would like conveyed to the council as they consider this proposal. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate your time tonight. And then we have...
There's actually another public hearing on the map.
Yeah, there's another one. Next, yeah, next order, line of business is the planning board will conduct a public hearing and receive comment on the proposed amendments to the Town of Scarborough zoning map. And Mr. Bacon, would you like to?
I touched on this already, but...
I didn't.
The Crossroads Plan Development District, I think as you know, is, was originally proposed to apply to the, well, most of the Scarborough Downs property, almost said the entire Scarborough Downs property, with the exception of the area of the property that abuts Higginson Parkway. At the time that was, and still is, left in the Higginson Parkway district, because it has frontage on Higginson Parkway, and a connection to Higginson Parkway. When the applicant acquired this property, it was identified that the property boundaries are incorrect on the tax assessor's information, which is also the, the property lines and the information that the zoning, zoning district follows. So, this is a proposal to update the Crossroads Plan Development District to follow the correct property boundaries, which is shown on, on this image. And so, in a variety of places, most notably to the northeast, the boundaries are different. And, so to correctly follow the property boundaries, as well as to add in the area that abuts Higginson Parkway, that is currently zoned, Higginson Parkway District. That's, so, that's what's before you, is to, to have the CPD follow the, essentially, the entirety property boundaries of the Downs, with the exception of what I'll call three fingers. And those three fingers are three narrow connections of the property to two, down to Route One, and one to Sawyer Road. And we're proposing to leave those out of this rezoning, principally because they're so narrow, and they, they abut different zones. So we wanted the, along Route One, it's a B3 zone, rather than rezoning these narrow fingers, as the Crossroads District, we're proposing to keep them as B3. And along Sawyer Road, it's the Village Residential Four District, residential zone. And again, as opposed to rezoning this narrow finger, we propose to keep it the same, so that it's subject to the standards in those districts. But with the exception of those, the map would be updated to, to follow the parcel as you, as it appears on your screen this evening.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll open up the public comments section of this. If anyone has any comments, please approach the podium, state your name and your address. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment. Does anyone here on the board have anything to offer on this? Yes, Roger?
I'm just kind of curious, Dan, on those parcels A and B, are those buildable?
There's buildable land on both, yep. There's also wetlands on both.
Okay.
Yep. I would note that we've, prior to this evening, and prior to the council's first reading, we've notified the abutters around these areas, and had conversations with some of them. In addition, the Land Trust is a major abutter to the east, and we've actually had a meeting with the Land Trust Board to talk about the project in general, the rezoning. So we've conducted outreach regarding those changes.
So that, that's section A. That would be abutting the industrial section we were talking about earlier, wouldn't it?
It would be part of the, it would, yep.
Okay. Well, the way you're going, if you wait a few more weeks, you might get some more land.
You could lost some too, so.
I'm all set.
Anyone else have any comments on this? All right, so I think at this point, we'll send our blessings on the proposed changes to the council.
Thank you.
That'll be it. Thank you, gentlemen, and appreciate your time this evening. All right. Number seven, Rock Church requests a site plan amendment for 66 Gorham Road, Assessor's Map R58, Lot 19. Jamel, introduce this.
Sure, thank you. Just as a reminder, this is a, this project is located at 58 Gorham Road in the R4 zoning district. The applicant was before the board at, in February, two months ago. And since then, the building size has been reduced from 13,370 square feet.
It's the handheld microphone.
It's like the guys in the back room are working on some light action, so if we can continue on.
All right. The building has been reduced from 13,370 square feet to 10,945 square feet. And also, there's been a reduction of seats from 600 to 450. As a result of these reductions, the applicant is proposing 209 parking spaces in the initial build-out, with a total of 47 additional spaces to be built out if warranted. Staff recommends that the applicant provide a seating chart of the auditorium, to verify the number of seats as proposed in the application. The applicant is no longer proposing to locate the HVAC units on the building addition. If you remember at the last meeting, that was gonna be part of the building addition, it is no longer. So they're maintain, proposing to maintain the existing locations of the HVAC units, and these units will need to be screened using fencing and/or vegetation. And finally, as the board knows, Gorham Road is being reconstructed this summer, after unitile is done. And ongoing through the summer, and given the project's location on Gorham Road, coordination with the town's road project will be very important going forward.
Thank you very much. And just a quick reminder to all of our applicants out there that we'd like to keep your presentation to a minimum. We have clearly received and reviewed all of the materials, so a quick overview, and then anything that perhaps staff has brought up that you thought the board should have as a piece of information as we deliberate would be helpful. Thank you. State your name and...
Great. My name is Tom Greer from Walsh Engineering. What I'll do is give you a very brief overview. We do have a DEP permit, we have an MDOT permit, we have approvals from the sanitary district, so we're, we think we're ready to go. Since the board has seen this last time, we, we have reduced the size of the building slightly. It looks the same, but it is, it is slightly smaller, so there were some site changes here. Most of the parking and all of that remains the same. What we're asking for is two alternates that we're looking for. The existing building has HVAC units that are on both sides of the building, and what the plan shows is bumping those out and putting some landscaping around the front of them, and eliminating the parking spaces in those locations, so we could get the sidewalk by them. That's a budget issue. If we're successful going through all of the budget issues, those will get removed and put up on the roof in this location here, and those will be screened. So we're looking at that as, as an alternate. And the last alternate that we were looking for was this final row of parking in this parking space here. We think we have enough parking spaces on site that, that we don't need those with the reduction of 150 seats out of it. If we do need those spaces, we'd like the ability to add them back without having to come back to the planning board. So we've left those as an alternate. Those likely would be a grassed area across here that might be used as temporary parking. And if it becomes necessary, it'll get paved. And we don't think these parking spaces will be needed, but, but if they are, then we're certainly looking to, to put those in. The goal is to have absolutely no parking on Route 114, and we still remain committed to that goal. There were some architectural questions that I will let Dwight answer, and go through those.
I'm Dwight Herdick, Dwight Herdick Architecture. If you spotted that, the major differences are just the overall size of the building is coming in basically five feet on all three sides. The, some of the details are simpler now. There's not as many fancy brackets and things like that. And, oh, yeah, right there. And instead of metal siding, now it's just gonna be the EFS, the drive-it, which most buildings around here are built the same way. So it's, it's pretty much the same, just simpler. And then, I did get a request for, on Friday, for a view of the, from the road, of what it would look like if the HVAC units went on top. So I was gonna hand some of these out, just so you can see.
Thank you.
Sure.
So you can sort of tell in there that the, you, these units are the exact size of the real units, and you can just barely see them. And that's also if you're six feet tall, standing right across the street, and if the, I don't have it lowered like you would in, in 3D, on those where your, your head height would actually be lower. So basically, you can't see them at all, even if they do go on the roof.
With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you very much. Roger, do you wanna start this one?
Sure. I still like the design of the building. This thing looks perfectly terrific. Be nice here. The only thing I would suggest is on the additional parking, you had mentioned that you would like to get, get approval to just, in case you do need it later on, you wanna be able to just do it.
Correct.
And I think it would be more appropriate for, you know, at least go to, to the planning department and make sure that you're not encroaching on any...
Yeah, that's fine. We can, we can, we can work it out that with staff approval, we'll, we'll put that together, the staff approval.
And just to be clear, it is fully designed on your plan.
Correct.
It's incorporated into your stormwater approach, and...
That's correct.
It's all there. You're just simply talking about a reduction at the outset, and the reduction would meet our minimum parking standards. I think that's the other thing to, to note, that they are proposing to meet our minimum standards, but have the capacity for expansion pre-approved, essentially.
So you're saying, basically, if they wanted to just expand the parking, they could go ahead and do it without coming to your department?
Well, it'd be, we would, we would probably do a little pre-construction meeting, just to be sure that we all know what they're building, and that it's per the approved plan.
Okay, all right.
But they wouldn't have to come back to the board, or...
Okay. I'm all set on everything else.
Thank you.
So, are you gonna be able to make the timeframe and break ground by June 13?
That's still up in the air.
Loaves and fishes, yeah.
We hope so. The, the plan is, is to be able to do some of the earthwork and, and that type of thing. We are not gonna have a building permit that quickly. So, we're hoping that we can get some of the earthwork done, and that will constitute a start.
Good. And then, go ahead.
If I could, just know, you know, in other type of examples that have been like, you know, people have started with a, a foundation permit.
Good.
You know, sort of, enabled to sort of get some bits off the ground, and then that's, that's the substantial start our ordinance looks for, and then the other critical pieces can come along.
Absolutely. I, I have just two small questions. One is regarding the setbacks from the stream and demarcating that appropriately, so that the construction stays outside of, you know, the buffer zones and things like that, Tom. Have you given thought to how you're going to demarcate that?
Yeah, I believe as part of the approval part, process, we're talking about a line right in here.
Okay.
And that will be part of the erosion control that goes in first. And there's a double row of erosion control along there. And so that, that separates that area.
Super. Maybe just bring it up in the pre-construction meeting with town staff, so that the contractors are aware to stay plenty away from that. That would be great. And then, who will be doing the post-construction inspection and maintenance of the underdrained soil filter? Is there a contract in place for that yet?
That will be done by Walsh Engineering. Will be available during construction for, for the construction of the two underdrained soil filters, and complying with the DEP requirements of oversight and monitoring.
Super. And then, as part of the MS4 permit, we just need something at the end saying that, the town needs something at the end saying that it was designed, it was built as designed and functions as intended. So I just, just a reminder about that.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the DEP requirement, so that'll be there as well.
Good luck to you. Thank you. I'm not gonna weigh in on, I mean, anything else. I think it's great.
Rachel?
Yeah, I, I just have, I guess, a memory check for me on the building design. Was the original proposal, did that have a second floor over?
Yes.
Is that still, still there? So that's part of what's been eliminated, is the second floor to make it small?
Correct.
Okay. So, I need, thank you.
And I don't have a whole lot else to add, other than you've seen staff comments and are willing to work through those, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what I have here is a, a motion, and it is, I move to approve the project titled Building Expansion 2017, proposed by the Rock Church of Greater Portland, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Walsh Engineering Associates, Inc., dated 4/10/18, with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings, the applicant is proposing to construct a 10,945-square-foot addition with associated parking, landscaping, and stormwater management infrastructure. Property is located within the residential R4 district, and is identified on the Town of Scarborough tax maps as Map R58, Lot 19. The planning board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation, and finds that the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance requirements for site utilization and layout, access, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, architecture signage, utilities, and storage. Waivers, number one, permit the proposed 22-foot parking aisle whist rather than the town standard of 25 feet. Conditions, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant will submit, A, a full, a full-floor plan of the building, including a seating chart; B, a revised plan set that includes town's post-construction stormwater infrastructure management ordinance standard note; C, a revised plan set that includes additional screening around the existing HVAC units on the site; D, documentation of the required upgrades up to the fire alarm and sprinkler system in the building. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Number two, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall demarcate the stream setback on the site with construction fencing. Three, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall coordinate the final layout of the underdrained soil filter, number two, with the planning department. And number four, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, their site contractors to be coordinated through the planning department. That is the motion. I have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Show that it's unanimous.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Grab your shovel.
Next item is Prompto Oil, Inc., request a site plan review for 318 U.S. Route One, Map U40, Lot 4. Jamel?
All right, thank you. Just as a reminder, this project is located at 318 U.S. Route One in the B3 zoning district. This applicant was last before the board in April, a few meetings ago. And as you may recall, site access to, from the site from Route One was one of the primary concerns. And since April, since the April meeting, staff, the applicant, and the town's traffic consultant met to discuss the challenges with site access at this site. Now, the applicant, as a result of the meetings and discussions with the applicant, the applicant has provided a modified design that includes a one-way entrance and exit... has provided a modified design that includes a one-way entrance and exit to Route 1, and staff is generally comfortable with the proposal. Staff and the board also requested that a sidewalk be constructed along the Route 1 frontage. After further discussion and review of the pedestrian infrastructure along this part of the corridor, staff recommends that the applicant provide funds equal to building or constructing of the sidewalk towards the town's multimodal reserve account instead. And finally, the signage provided by the applicant doesn't appear to conform with the town's design standards. These details need to be worked out with the applicant. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Again, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Will Conway from Sadego Technics, representing Prompto. Kevin King from Prompto is here as well. You've seen the site plan before, Jamel did a great job of, you know, deciding, determining where we are in the process. Referring to the plan behind you, the issue that we had with the site plan was access on Route 1. So what we're proposing is a right turn in only, coming in this entrance. Vehicles would queue here, go through the drive-through, and then exit in a right turn out there only. And that met with tremendous reception from Bill Bray, your traffic engineer. I think everyone is happy with this plan, staff, and we're here for your final approval.
That was very brief, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
I want to say one thing.
You almost made it.
Just quick reminder of what Prompto looks like. But the big thing, we had the issue of the sign, and I had two different engineers, so here's kind of conceptual of the sign, what the sign actually would look like, except it has two middle letters. And we actually submitted one with the proper middle letters, but I don't know if you've seen it or not, so this is that conceptual line, hopefully correct.
Thank you.
I have a burning question, can I ask it?
Go for it.
Where's Sean?
He's golfing.
Okay.
Every year he goes with his father and brothers to Ohio.
Okay. That was very nice of you to come in his place. Maybe you're his good luck charm, Will, so thank you. So is the applicant willing to pay this in-lu sidewalk fee?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Did we have to try it?
Just checking. It was a rhetorical question, if you will. So my, I have a question and a comment. My question is about, on the, on the back of the staff comments regarding multiple areas on the site where grading goes right up to the edge of the wetland, the planning board should consider a condition of approval which states that protective measures be put in place prior to the start of construction. Have you thought about what those measures would be?
I would suggest that a silt fence would be appropriate. That's a physical barrier. Normally, we use the erosion control berm mix, but a silt fence is a little bit more of a rigid, you know, don't go over this line.
Yeah, but the trouble that I'm having is that wetlands are considered waters of the state, so, you know, maybe a double, you know, silt fence plus an erosion control berm, something like that, because here's my comment, this is, remember I said I had a question and a comment? That sometimes just because DEP permits something, doesn't mean it should be built. Putting something so close to a wetland like this is, just doesn't, it, it just blows my mind that DEP will give a permit like this. So I want to know what controls are appropriate if, if double erosion controls might be, might be appropriate, or might be considered by the applicant, and I guess I wouldn't mind staff weighing in on that as well.
We would be certainly open to it. I mean, it's a reasonable request.
And I can chime in, since probably Will's not aware. So Sean did add double erosion sediment controls for us along the Millbrook side of it.
Okay, alright.
That was staff's comments earlier on in the process, but not all the way around the back to the wetland side. It was more about the street side.
Yeah. So I would just ask that maybe those be extended, and it sounds like, you know, Sean has already been amenable to that and sort of put that in, but just, great job finding something that finally worked, Kevin.
We struggled with it.
Thank you, yes. I mean, when you looked at it, it's like, and I turned around and looked at it, I was like, oh, why didn't we think of that before? So...
Actually, there was a plan 10 years ago that was obviously...
Oh! Alright.
The CBA turned down.
Well, assuming that we all agree, welcome to Scarborough Prompto. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I, I just, I just want to commend the planning staff and the applicant for hanging in there and working on this until we've gotten something that I, I think personally really meets, addresses the needs of the town, and I hope the applicant, and welcome to Scarborough.
Thank you.
Roger.
Yes, I want to just thank you, thank you for your perseverance going through this process. This has been challenging for you, and I think it's great, and I'm, I'm glad you're going to be here too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't have a lot to add, other than, of course, we're glad that you did hang in there. We figured there was probably a solution somewhere, and we're glad we arrived at it. So with that, I will make the draft, sorry, the motion to approve the project titled Prompto Oil Change Facility, proposed by Prompto, Inc., as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sadego Technics, dated 4/20/18, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant is proposing to construct a 1,650 square foot fully enclosed automobile repair and service facility with associated parking, landscaping, and stormwater management infrastructure. Property is located within the general business B3 district and is identified on the Town of Scarborough tax maps as map U40 Lot 4. The planning board has reviewed the application supporting documentation and finds that the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance requirements for site utilization and layout, access, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, architecture, signage, utilities, and storage. We have several conditions here. Condition number one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the plan set shall be revised to include (a) the addition of entrance-only and exit-only signs as identified on the traffic peer review memo by Traffic Solutions dated 5/5/18; (b) the applicant shall pay an in-lu fee in the amount equal to the estimated construction of the sidewalk along the Route 1 frontage. The funds are to be directed to the town's multimodal reserve account; (c) addition of one maple tree, I'm sorry, we did not discuss that, and I will bring this back up, but (c) an addition of one maple tree to the east of the proposed site entrance. These reservations shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Number two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall adjust and finalize the traffic impact fees as identified on the traffic peer review memo by Traffic Solutions dated 5/5/18, and provide final payment. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a final signage plan to the planning department. Thank you for providing that this evening. Four, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall put protective measures in place at the edge to have the identified wetland on the site. Five, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site coordinator, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. That is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Robin on the second, and we'll have a discussion real briefly. Maple tree, is the applicant agreeable to adding a maple tree as drafted in this motion?
Yes.
Fantastic news. Alright. Anyone have anything else to add to the discussion?
Yeah, you're going to come out of your feet.
All in favor? I'm sure that's to be unanimous. Good luck, welcome to Scarborough.
Thank you very much.
You got it. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Oh, we can. We're about an hour and 35 minutes into it.
We need four people, so...
We need four people, you can have a break, Roger. Come back. In the meantime, we will introduce the next item, which is number nine, Rosewood Lane Development, which has been tabled at the request of the applicant. So we'll go to number 10, Contour Properties LLC, requests a subdivision amendment review for H Science Park, assessors map R77 Lot 3B.
All right. Just a reminder, this is located in the Business Office Research Zoning District. This applicant was before the board in January, several meetings ago, and since then has provided a revised subdivision amendment application that incorporates staff and board comments. The applicant is proposing to combine lots 3A and 3B into a commercial condominium. Tonight's review will include a subdivision amendment review, and then going forward, the board will review individual site plan applications. Staff recommends that the plan include the location of the Shoreland Zoning Overlay District on the plan. Also, a plan note should be added that indicates how the open space will be maintained and who will own it. And finally, the Scarborough Sanitary District is seeking information about the existing sewer infrastructure on the site, and the applicant is encouraged to coordinate with them on this matter. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much. Introduce yourself, please.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mike Tatum O'Wieland. I'm an engineer with Terradon Consultants, and I'm here with Bob Gudrow, who is a member of Contour Properties, the owner and applicant of Science Park Subdivision. Science Park Subdivision was originally approved in 1978, I believe. This is a plan of the original subdivision, it was submitted as part of your, your packet, part of the submission. Lot 1 of the subdivision, which is located right here, is owned by others and is developed and is, is not under review, not owned by the applicant. So what the applicant is proposing to do is combine the 14 and a half, give or take, acres that he owns, and as well as, so that includes the lots 2 through 6 that I mentioned before from the original subdivision, as well as Science Park Drive. This project's been before you a couple times, the subdivision, most notably for a site plan amendment for Lot 2, which was the old Foundation for Blood Research. So out there today is the Foundation for Blood Research building, which is currently being redeveloped into office space, a, a second structure that was associated with the Foundation for Blood Research that's being redeveloped for, for a different user. And the, the rest of the parcel is undeveloped. So the proposal is to create a condominium that includes five total units, and I've tried to color those in different colors so you could see, so it'd be this sort of green area, this tan area, this rose-colored or pink area, and these two blue-green areas. Those would be condominium, limited common element areas for future development. In addition to that, about five and a half acres, which is this green piece, is intended to be donated to the Scarborough Land Trust. Just recently, over the past couple days, the applicant's been in touch with the Land Trust, and although they haven't formally had an action in front of their board, they are extremely interested, and it's expected that their board would like to accept this as a gift, given its proximity to the Nun-Sedge River and its sensitivity because of the wetlands on site. So that's expected to be donated to the Land Trust, and, and again, the, the existing lots are, are proposed to be combined into one. This is a greatly simplified application compared to the last one you saw, because we've pulled out all the site plan elements. So we, we do intend to come back very quickly for site plan approval for the individual units that are shown here, but today we're just before you to essentially wipe the, wipe the lot lines off the plan and create the condominium. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Rachel, would you like to start us off?
Yes, I'd like to start off by saying I have no questions.
Fantastic. Roger.
I think I'm pretty well all set, I'm going to wait for Robin.
Great. Um, I guess, I have a question on, you know, guess what?
Stormwater?
People, yes, exactly. Um, no, I know that, tell me, are you meaning, is, is post less than pre?
Yeah, so we talked a little bit about this last time I was here. We have, we've got designs for these, for these individual developments, and stormwater is being handled on individual lots. So today, we're, we're, again, we're just, we just want to create the condominium, and we're not, we're not seeking approval for any of the, any of these developments. There's, there's no stormwater management proposed right now, because there's no, there's no real development proposed. When we do come back for the site plan review, there will be stormwater management proposed in order to, to meet the, the general standard as well as the flooding standard.
Okay. And so, um...
And if I, sorry to interrupt, but...
No, please.
That's, that's sort of the pattern we, that was created when we developed, when Unit 2 and 2A were developed. If you remember, there's a, um, underdrained soil filter developed in that area for, for that development.
You don't foresee it being a problem on any of the lots, do you?
No. In fact, you've already seen a stormwater management report for this back in January, and we've, we've pulled it back, and, and just to simplify things, and again, I'm taking step one here with the subdivision amendment.
Excellent. So I wrote a question saying, how is the wetland going to be demarcated? What does that have, I don't know if it necessarily applies here.
Yeah, there's no wetland impacts proposed, and, and in fact, there's no impact proposed within 25 feet of the wetland.
Okay.
So not sure it would be necessary.
And is, is there going to be a sidewalk built, or no?
There will be, there's a proposed sidewalk, there will be a proposed sidewalk along Science Park Road, along the length of Science Park Road.
Okay. And so the, even though it's going to remain a private road or street, it's still going to meet town standards when it gets designed, the road? The road?
Yes, so the, so the road exists today, and the applicant's in, in the process of improving it. Is that right, Tom? Is that...
Sure.
I'm all set.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Roger, yeah, regarding the sidewalk, I thought the question was the sidewalk on Route 1. Isn't that the question? That the concern is? And if you're going to have a sidewalk throughout the property, it seems to make sense to have a sidewalk on Route 1, in lieu of the, you know, contributing to the fund.
Yeah, so the applicant feels pretty strongly that a, that a sidewalk on Route 1 is, in fact, truly a sidewalk to nowhere. There's, so the frontage is, is here, and beyond this, there's the, there's the CMP-owned land, and then there's another privately-owned land, and then there's the Nun-Sedge River. And on, I think on the other side of the Nun-Sedge River is a sidewalk, but clearly this isn't going to, going to get anyone anywhere. And in addition to that, there, there are concerns with, so that the wetlands associated with the Nun-Sedge River would require, would need to be impacted in order to build that sidewalk. So the applicant's pretty adamant about the fact that it's, it's not necessary, and would really like to see, you know, the board not require that.
I'm inclined to agree with the applicant on that. I may not be, I may get expelled from the board here, but I, I tend to agree with that, so I guess, I guess if they don't build a sidewalk, then they put the money into it.
I guess that's the question to the board?
It's, it's also something for a later date, though, based on what we're looking at here tonight, right?
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. I thought it was in the, it was in the...
We get to let them fight over this for three weeks, and then we'll find out more where they landed.
You get to have the same comment come back from staff.
Correct. Correct.
If we do want to provide that type of guidance that might help facilitate the next three weeks' worth of discussion, that's, that's awesome.
Nick, can I just add one thing?
You may.
One, I think maybe the one of the reasons Roger brought up is, we had a, a pretty big discussion about this section of Route 1 and sidewalk, and the transportation committee is really weighing towards putting a sidewalk or sidewalks in this area, so that's where your staff comments are coming from, is the transportation committee.
Who's on our...
I'm on that committee.
And he's the lone voice again.
Were you the dissenting member?
Yes. I think he's going to keep up that word.
And so... And so would this, this parcel could potentially, though, be eligible for the in lieu fee to have it go toward? I'm asking.
Sure, potentially. I think in staff's estimation, this is a case where we're close enough to some existing sidewalk that was built not too long ago, and we worked with partners to bring it further than was originally gonna be developed along route one. So we feel like this is, this would be a location where staff would advocate for, for the sidewalk development.
Okay.
That's at the board's discretion.
So you don't necessarily agree with the applicant that it's a sidewalk to nowhere?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments from board members here?
I, I, I like the idea of a sidewalk in lieu of, I hadn't, I had that noted that originally on the, on the work that came out, and I forgot to mention that. Sidewalk.
Well, I guess your next three weeks of discussions will get interesting. I, too, think you should consider it, and I know it goes nowhere now, but always potential down the road, and where we have brought sidewalks out to that parcel already, I think that continuation is something the town is looking for. Consider that as you go into your discussions. I personally look forward to hearing more about it in three weeks. But with that said, I don't have a whole lot else to add to this, so I'll make a motion based on the proposal that we're discussing here tonight. I move to approve the project titled Science Park Subdivision, proposed by Contour Properties, LLC, as depicted on the plan set prepared by Teradyne Consultants, LLC, dated 4/30/18, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant is proposing to create a commercial condominium by combining lots three A and three B. The property is located within the business office research and shoreline overlay districts, and is identified on the Town of Scarborough tax map as map R77, lots three A and three B. Planning Board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation, and finds that the proposed design of the subdivision amendment adequately addresses the subdivision and zoning ordinance requirements. Conditions, there are two. One, the plan set shall be revised to include, A, this town's standard subdivision notes, B, the addition of the zoning districts adjacent to the property, C, a plan note indicating that the land on the plan set identified as open space is to remain as open space. In addition, the note should also indicate the entity that is proposed to maintain the open space. Number two, the final approval from the Scarborough sanitary district is required prior to further development. Approval documents shall be provided to the planning department when received by the applicant. That is the motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion, further discussion? All in favor? I'm sure that is unanimous. Thank you, guys. We'll see you again.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's, we're about to get into some good stuff here, so does anyone want a five-minute break before we hit, hit the high tide? You guys good?
Yep. Thank you.
Roger, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good right now.
Check with me in forty-five minutes.
I won't be in about forty-five minutes.
That's an option. All right. Number eleven. Waterstone Properties Group, Inc., requests an amended, amended site plan for lot seven, Scarborough Gallery subdivision, assessors map R37, lot 3307. Jamel, would you like to introduce this, please?
Yes, please, thank you. Just a reminder, this is in the, located in the B2 zoning district, and it's the location, the development pad currently in front of Marshall's Home Goods and Bob's Discount Furniture along the Scarborough Gallery Boulevard. The applicant was before the board in April, several meetings ago, for the proposal for an 8,242-square-foot retail building. At the last board meeting, staff identified that one of the primary components to address was the completion of the plan development process due to the fact that the applicant was proposing the location of the building within the required 50-foot front yard setback. Many of these items that are required for the plan development process were reviewed and discussed by the board as part of the 2005 Scarborough Gallery subdivision approval. However, the applicant, you know, has requested, has provided supplemental information to address these requirements, and staff is comfortable with the materials provided. The applicant is proposing a 10-foot walkway, sort of between the parking lot and the building, instead of the required five-foot sidewalk and five-foot landscape provision. So the applicant should address this with the board. Staff recommends that the electric pole box be relocated close to the dumpster pad on the site and provide better screening from the public way. And then I'll have, give Angela Blanchett, our town engineer, a chance to discuss some stormwater concerns and issues on the site.
Thank you. The last meeting that they were in front of the board, we talked a little bit about the downstream impacts from, in the watershed in general, towards Muzzy Road. And so we talked about where the stormwater is being directed to an existing pond to take a look at some maintenance logs and things like that, and then also maybe take a site visit. So I was able to, Jamel and I went out to the site with the design engineer, did a walk around the pond, did our own inspection, and I was extremely pleased, I think, with the condition out there. I was surprised and very pleased with the condition out there. There was very little erosion, it was very stable, looked like it had been maintained. The question really is about the details, and I think Woodard and Kern also has chimed in in their comments, you'd see, about showing some documentation of that maintenance that's happened, and making sure, there's a lot of pipes, I will say, there's pipes that are submerged by design that you cannot see. So we don't know if, how those are functioning. Those should be probably jetted and cleaned, or if they have already, that might have already been done, but there's no documentation to show that. And then also, this is a site that triggers a five-year recertification with DEP, so I'm curious on where they are in that process, and whether the five years just happened or it's coming, or, because with that comes documentation as well. I think the documentation that was provided to us was during construction, and what we're really asking for is the post-construction, to show that you're maintaining this as you move forward, and making sure that is in place to kind of carry on forevermore. And then there are a few issues, just trying to figure out, getting our, our hands around the treatment efficiencies with the bio-retention cells, things like that, just needing some more information that I think staff probably can work with the design engineer to get through, but really supplying more documentation is really needed. And I, I think we just need to maybe be a little clearer. Maybe I wasn't as clear as I could be, and maybe we could work through that with staff.
Thank you. And you, Roger?
All good.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Morrell from Jones Beach Engineers. With me tonight is Doug Richardson from Waterstone Properties, and Eric Poole are my design engineer. As Angela said, we, Eric did do a site walk out there. There were a few things on the pond, some riprap, some different things that needed to be updated. I believe there were four items that needed some attention on the pond, and we've agreed to take care of those, and we've already, there were some elevations that had to be checked, which we sent our survey crew out, make sure the elevations were per the design, and we can confirm that those were by design. One of the other things that we have done since the last time we're here is we have met with main DEP about the amendment to the, the permit itself. We've submitted all the paperwork, and we have a verbal that we, we have the permit, but we do not have the paper version of the actual amended permit. But we have supplied them with all the documents that they needed to give us the approval for the new DEP on this 8400-square-foot building. As Jamel said, there are a couple of things that we're asking the board, one of those being, we are showing a 10-foot-wide sidewalk along the entire frontage. And one of the things that we've do in different projects like this, that we noticed that there's a lot of different pedestrian traffic in front of these buildings, and when people are opening up those doors that have a large area to be able to have pedestrians moving back and forth, we thought, think it's a better idea for this building, other than having a five-foot planter in the front and then a five-foot sidewalk. So we're asking the board to take that into consideration. We just feel it's a better look for the actual building with a larger sidewalk. The other item that we're asking the board to consider is the, the light poles within the existing parking lot are all, I believe they're all 30-foot high, where the board requires 20-foot-high poles. We're asking the board to allow us, I believe we're only installing one more pole on the entire site. We're asking the board to allow us to keep that last pole going in as a 30-foot-high pole, so there's consistency across the site itself. The rest of the comments that we received, basically from the traffic and from the, from Woodard and Kern, are items, technical things to put onto the plans to have final documents to be able to give to the board. So with that, I'll open up to the board for any questions.
I'll, I'll start with a quick one. The electric pole box?
So the electric pole box is a flush-mounted box. The transformer itself is to the east of the site, and then it goes on the ground, and then the pole box is something that's flush-mounted, and so it's not really something that's gonna be a visible transformer. So we're not really quite sure of why staff thinks that that would be something visible because it's actually something that's flush-mounted. So what we would request the board, the electrical line starts along on the outside of the site and then runs to the back of the, the building, so that we can have the power at the back of the building. So that's a flush-mounted, flush-mounted item, and that allows us to get the power to the back of the building where it should be. Where staff had talked about taking that, we'd actually end up going into the side of the building where we have some of that loading operations in some of the sidewalks, which would be more in the way, I think, of pedestrians walking around. So where it's flush with the ground, we felt that it's really in a good location where it is.
Thank you, Roger. All right, since this is an opportunity for public comment, is there anyone here that would like to make a comment prior to board discussion?
Doug Richardson, Waterstone Properties Group. Just to jump back to the vault, central main power requires them so many feet from the transformer, that's why we have to do it. It is the vault that's sitting above ground right now. There is another pair of them that have been already installed on the Bob's side, so you can see they are flush and invisible from the ground. They have a manhole to access, so you would not see it if it's in that place. And it's currently the same type over in front of the Bob's Discount Furniture.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Public comment? Is there anyone here to comment? All right, so now I'm gonna close public comment. Roger, would you like to start with this one?
Sure. First of all, is, when you referred to the back of the building, is that the, the side of the building by the boulevard?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. I just wanted, first, the note from Bill Bray regarding the lot seven. Is that, I'm not sure I have that correct.
So, so one of the things...
Snow storage.
Yeah, so one of the things that was discussed on our first plan set, we showed snow storage near the actual driveway coming in, and because we removed the large portion of that whole easterly part of the, westerly part of the site is now no longer any parking at all, we're showing a large stor- storage area on that, that westerly part. And I believe what he's asking us to do is put a note onto the plan that says that the snow is not allowed to be within that area. I don't think he had a problem with where we're showing it, he just wants a note saying it's not allowed to go in the, you know, near the driveway entrances, which we're okay with doing.
So that's where it is, right up there?
That's correct.
Okay. The only other question I have is on your landscaping. You're not proposing to have any landscaping on the front of the building, is that correct?
That's correct. It's a large sidewalk instead.
Okay. Take them all set.
Front face in the parking lot, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Front facing the parking lot.
Thank you, Roger. Robin?
So I just want to make sure that, that you're planning to work with staff on the stormwater aspects appropriately, so you've received the Woodard and Kern comments?
We did, and, and there's some from your town staff, and a lot of those are, are just cleanup type of things, and I think we'll have our DEP permit probably this week, and should be able to address the other ones with staff.
Okay. But just, just to clarify, you're gonna work on time of concentration and peak flow calculations with staff?
Yes.
That's appropriate?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you understand the difference between the post-construction inspection versus the active construction inspections that...
We do. And it's one of those things that we've, we've spent a lot of time out there making sure that things are clean, even before the, the site walk, to make sure that everything is, is tidy, and we will, because our five-year is, hasn't happened yet, it's coming up in, like, almost in the fall.
Yeah.
So we've already worked, started with DEP to set up the timeline, make sure we recall...
For the recertification.
Yeah.
Great. Excellent. And then one of the last things is, an increase is shown in the post-development condition at analysis point number one in the hydroCAD. You're working through that with them?
Yeah, that's already been addressed, but we'll make sure that that's pointed out to staff in the documentation we have.
And I think that's pretty much all I had, as long as staff is satisfied. And you've, you've talked about the flooding in the area, and that's been taken into account?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Rachel?
Yeah, I just have a question on the light pole. So there's, there's one that to be built that you would like to do to 30 feet. Talk a little bit about the abutters. They have the same 30 feet?
I'm not exactly sure. We didn't go out and search around, but this whole entire development with the big parking lot coming at it, it, that's all 30, and actually, some of the poles that already exist are on the outside of the, the access drive in the middle anyways, so to have 120 would look kind of awkward in the whole entire development.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm in favor of the consistency. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't just the light poles on this property that were 30, but that rather throughout the whole development.
I've worked on the project since the beginning, and all of the lot seven, which did get constructed years after the Walmart and the Lowe's, we ensured that we used the exact spec from the planned unit development and that we were consistent, so this would be consistent with the other ones that are there.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I'm too generally satisfied as long as you continue to work with staff on tying up the rest of these items, so.
Okay.
That said, I have a motion here. I move to approve the project titled 700 Gallery Boulevard, proposed by Waterstone Properties Group, Inc., as depicted on the plan set prepared by Jones Beach Engineers, dated 4/30/18, with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. The applicant is proposing to construct 8,242-square-foot retail building with associated parking, landscaping, and stormwater management infrastructure. The property is located within the regional business B2 district and is identified on the Town of Scarborough tax map as map R37, lot 3307. Planning Board has reviewed the application and supporting documentation, and finds that the proposed design of the site plan adequately addresses the site plan review and zoning ordinance requirements for site utilization, layout, access, internal vehicular movement, pedestrian ways, landscaping, stormwater management, architecture, signage, utilities, and storage. Waivers, one, permit, permit the proposed 10-foot-wide sidewalk rather than the town's standard of five feet of landscaping and five feet walkway. Conditions, there are three. One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the plan set shall be revised to include the stormwater management plans and details per staff comments memo, and a detail of the proposed dumpster enclosure that shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Number two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide a revised main DEP permit to the planning department. And number three, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. And it's a motion to have a second.
Second.
And a second. Robin, any discussion on this topic?
Nick, just to clarify, that one B has been removed.
It has been removed.
Thank you.
Staff seemed generally comfortable with the explanation they were giving and didn't realize it was flush.
And where we're gonna put in the, the waiver on the 30-foot light as opposed to the 20-foot?
Yes. Ken? So I think with it being part of the application packet, then the board's approval, and that's in the documentation, that, then the board's approval will sort of, that's just a condition, that's just part and parcel of what the board's approving. You're not waiving, they're allowed to go higher, so it's not as though you're, you know, it's not like it says, again, sort of like with the 50-foot setback, they're asking for something different. It's just, okay, the starting point is 20, but you can go higher with discussion, so.
Okay.
Not necessarily a waiver, as I explained that well, I'm not sure, I don't feel like I did, but hopefully I got you there. Any other discussion with this? All in favor? I'm sure that is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does your chairman?
Yes.
The app, we're scheduled to be last, but the applicant before us are waiting for their architect. Can we switch?
I would, I would be okay with accepting a motion from a board member here to revise the agenda to switch Bluebird Self-Storage and Ashley and Alexander Holdings.
I'm so moved to take item number 13 ahead of item number 12.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor of putting, sure that is unanimous? Absolutely. So next on the list will be Ashley and Alexander Holdings LLC, request a site plan review for 690 US Route 1 assessor's map U30 lot 12. Jamel?
Actually, I think, I'm going to do a, an overview. Certainly received staff and peer review comments that dive into a number of the details, but I think in this application, sort of thinking about, really there's sort of a bigger picture element here in, in terms of access management and particularly access to Route 1. As the board, you know, we actually went through a similar application with, with Pronto, took a lot of iterations to try to find the right answer. Route 1 presents a number of challenges. And it presents different challenges and different stretches of the road. Right here in front of Route 1, we sort of have a five-lane highway with a dedicated left-hand turn. In other stretches, there's, there's barriers that might prohibit left-hand turns. In the stretch of Route 1 that we're talking about now, this is really from Old Blue Point Road southerly towards Saco. You know, in this stretch, it's, there's only four lanes of highway with limited right-of-way to work with. And there's, this is an area of, of the town in a stretch of Route 1 where there's a series of small lots that have 50 to 75 feet of frontages with non-conforming, single-family homes, grandfather non-conforming, all perfectly legal to be there now. But redevelopment presents certain challenges. And so this application is really the first redevelopment opportunity in this area of town. And in a lot of ways, it presents great opportunity for revitalization in, in the area. But I think the board, the town, and the applicant need to be mindful and cautious of ensuring that we're thinking of the long-term development potentials. As I noted, this stretch of road is very difficult to consider how left-hand turn access from Route 1, either coming into or leaving the site, would be challenged. And, and we don't really have a long-term vision for what the future of this area would be. I should mention that there is an RFP going out on the street pretty soon with our partners at PAX, the area, the Portland area transportation folks, to actually start to think about Route 1 more comprehensively. So that's one of the challenges that's presented with this application, but we think there are opportunities for short-term solutions that, that won't impact, have sort of adverse impacts in the long term. The applicant has done a good job of sort of pulling together a number of properties and has access, potential access out to Old Blue Point Road. I know the traffic engineers are still working on numbers to see if that actually makes sense. We don't want to say that Old Blue Point Road is the definitive answer, but our ordinances typically say, look, where you have access to two access points, you should really look to go to the secondary road first. Because it's really where turning movements occur, that's where accidents occur, that's where traffic problems occur. So we, we feel like there's some more information to be gained and understood before we come to a definitive answer. And actually, just, I think it was Friday, we had a very comprehensive meeting here in this room with the applicant, their design team, traffic engineer, representative from DOT, towns peer reviewer, Bill Bray, staff sitting here at the table along with Jim Butler, our commercial code fire inspector, to talk about this very issue. So I think tonight, really, the board should think about this discussion as really an elevated sketch plan review, just a good opportunity to talk about any other challenges, let the applicant know, you know, what you're pleased with you're seeing, what other areas might need additional work, because I know they're interested to start developing as soon as possible. So I guess just by way of quick background, as Jamel would typically do, this is in the TVC 3 district. They're seeking a 10,000 square foot building that would have, I believe, upwards of four tenants. We're talking currently of two restaurants and two personal service tenant spaces. Again, as I mentioned at the outset, you received staff and peer review comments that laid out a number of things, but I just want to echo a few of them, just being mindful of buffering. Again, we talked about there being a number of single-family homes in the area and sort of being mindful of redevelopment may happen in time, but it currently, those are single-family homes. So what's the right treatment to, to be mindful of the character, the, the character of the area? I think thinking about the stormwater analysis and, and points of discharge and being sure that, you know, we're thinking about sort of long-term impacts. And then the only other thing be worth talking about, well, not the only thing, only other thing I'm going to bring up before I turn it over, is just to be sure, we're, when we think about the parking capacity, we just didn't see in the application, want to be sure that when they're thinking about seating for the restaurants, I know there's some discussion about patio seating and how that's being folded in and articulated as part of their overall parking needs. So I'm sure there's plenty of more interesting things to talk about, but I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Jay. And if the applicant would like to introduce themselves and this project to us, please.
Chairman McGee, members of planning board, my name is George Kerr. I live in Old Orchard Beach, but most, both of my daughters that are doing this project live here in Scarborough. Ashley is out of the country right now on business, so I'm going to take a stab at trying to present what she has indicated to me earlier tonight on the phone. First of all, I, I couldn't start this meeting off without thanking the staff. I know that they don't get complimented a lot, but Jamal, Angela, Jim Butler, during our meetings, have been very, very helpful. Bill Bray, got to know him a little bit, pretty precise on being a traffic consultant for the community and people from DOT. Also, Jay Chase, taking the time and the energy, dealing with me over the past three years on this project to get the very best that we could provide, because I do believe this is going to be the area that's going to be most revitalized to comply with your ordinance, to serve the village center and also the local market. As Jay has indicated, things, it's very time-sensitive. We have all of our tenants locked in. We're privileged to work with everybody within the community. And I'm going to start off, I just would like to address a few of the issues. Then I'm going to lean to Andy Highland from Port City Architects to do a little bit of design, show you the design and the materials that are going to be used. And then Will from Sebagotek will give a more detailed look at some of Jamal's questions so we can respond to them. Traffic is a major issue. I walked into this thinking I could solve the problem from Saco to Dodson Corner. That didn't work out well. Money badly spent. We are doing traffic counts currently. Those numbers should be in within the next day or two. I'll let Will respond to that. I think that for the short term, and what I'm saying short term, to get the project off the ground and comply with the ordinance, but I do believe that we still have to look at the Old Blue Point traffic light there, and I do know that I would have to contribute to that. I have no problem doing that. Again, I feel very comfortable with this area, Scarborough. I think it's an opportunity to really revitalize that area, and I want to play a major role in that. To address some of Jamal's issues, and I'll be very, very brief, dealing on the front page under site access is, I think Jay gave a pretty good summary of what Bill Bray wants us to do by using the Old Blue Point Road. We don't have a problem with that. Again, as far as our participation with the light on Old Blue Point Road, we're a player in the community. We expect to pay for that also, we're sharing that cost. Parking areas, I think that we discussed this. I know my daughter hit on it the last time she was here, dealing with the five-foot walkways. Do you want a clean and chic area so it's easily maintained? We have indicated, and I believe the plan will show that, we have recommended that, and I hope you're flexible, to have potted plants. Because in the spring and the summers, that's when they're going to be there. We don't want something that you can't maintain during the winter. Under the pedestrian wave, alternative transportation, truly, I've heard a lot about sidewalks tonight. Speaking of sidewalks from nowhere, this is it. But again, we are willing and able and want to contribute to the fund for sidewalks somewhere. Hopefully, in the long term, when DOT and everybody can address the traffic issues, we can work, should there be a sidewalk out in front, but I think that that'll be years down the road. The other issue that was discussed under landscaping, my abutter, Michelle Rayburn, who has State Farm Insurance, would like me, I've, speaking, in speaking to her, she would like me to wait on any buffers or anything like that, because she kind of likes things the way they are. I will be meeting with her again. We've had meetings, very, a lot of meetings over the past three years, and I just want to make sure whatever we recommend to you comes from her first. We've got a great relationship. And as far as on the other side, I believe there's a fence and some bushes and whatever else we've got to do, we can work with, with the town or the abutter. Under the last sentence here, the applicant is strongly encouraged to replace the proposed concrete block retaining wall with an element of complement design to the main structure. That, that is not exposed, that wall. So I, I think on the plan that, that issue wouldn't, that would not be an issue. Also, the last point just above lighting, the board should consider installation of a wooden guardrail or other agreed-upon feature along the back edge of the parking area to ensure snow storage did not occur within the proposed under-drained soil filters. What I would, I, I have no problem, and with the guardrail fence, we've already indicated that on the southerly side, the Abut State Farm. But what I'd like to be able to do is, there's probably, I don't know exactly, I think Will will be able to tell you, 40 or 50 feet between what is the parking area and the drainage ponds. I'd like to be able to move that further back, maybe 10 feet or 15 feet away from the ponds and be able to put snow there, because that would be the long run, and I don't think that would affect anything. And the other issue, outdoor storage, I intend on putting in cedar fencing, natural cedar fencing, so everything is conducive. That would be behind the building and along to block the, the electric boxes. And I think that pretty much wraps it up. But again, I, I just want to thank the staff. We've done a great job. I've served on planning boards and they do a good job. And I appreciate them taking the time to help us expedite this. I think the input is good. We have some disagreements, but hopefully at the next meeting, we can iron those things out. At this time, what I'd like to do is introduce Andy Highland from Port City Architects to give you a look at what we're proposing to build, the style and materials that are going to be used. If you have any questions, I have no problem answering them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, good evening. As George said, I'm Andy Highland at Port City Architecture. We're the architects for the project. So I just wanted to really briefly kind of go over materials, the kind of building, basic data. It's, as you can see up here, it's a one-story trust roof, wood construction building, and it is a pitched roof on the top. And we are looking to just put four tenants in, kind of side by side on the front. It's about 10,000 square feet, so I think it's about 80 by 125 is the footprint of the building. Got a 10-foot arcade in the front here. We're looking to put the restaurants on each end, so one of the restaurants would be on this side, and the other restaurant would be on the other side here. And I, and we've located on the ends rather than in the front, some kind of seasonal outdoor seating. And right now, we're proposing, it's almost like 400 square feet, maybe like a 20 by 40, something like that, but that can vary on the sides. So I think that's kind of always a nice piece when you see, and located on the side, I think it'll be a little more comfortable than being right in the front of the building itself. And so anyway, there's sidewalk that comes all the way around and, and, you know, so you can get access, and we're looking at access points through, from inside the restaurant as well to be in there.
That's mine, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, all right, wasn't me?
I'm not sure we have one there.
Okay. There we go. I've got one.
I just won't touch anything.
Okay, okay. I was like, yeah, I didn't touch anything, I was just standing here.
Sorry about that.
So, and, so the other two, the other two tenants that they're looking at are personal services in the middle. One of the things we like to do, so we're pretty traditional in our kind of looks and trying to the main heritage. We also, on retail, I like to, you know, incorporate the signage within the facade. So we've added the gables in the fronts and, and a wide enough area that you can actually, you know, we're not sticking signs on the roof or anything like that, that they actually kind of become part of the architecture. It'll be similar in their, in their look. Other thing that we do is also bring the front of the gable roof up a little bit higher. This, everything will be heated and cooled with rooftop units, gas-fired rooftop units. So we kind of chisel out a little bit of the back area, cover the front so that they'll all be screened from the street, and, and that any kind of snow will just drain off the back of the building. This is kind of just the whole side. I'll let Will kind of take a, a look at things on the site plan itself. This is just our parking around and Route 1 on the front. Materials we're looking at, if I just didn't get into that, so asphalt shingle roof, the siding and the trim will all be cementitious, hardy plank and hardy trim siding. And we're looking at a base, about a three or four-foot base of stone veneer on the bottom as well. So that's pretty much the architecture with it. And I'll be, I'll introduce Will now, who you know, Will Conway from Sebagoteknics, and he'll talk to you about all the hot and burning site issues for the, and traffic for the project, okay?
Thank you.
Solve the technology. Thank you, Andy. Good to be back. It's not too late, so, and I know there's another applicant, so I'm not going to be so brief, so my apologies for that, but I, I try to be concise. We had a great meeting on Friday with Jay, Jamel, Angela, your town engineer and MDOT. And I think what you're going to see when we come back is, I can refer to the site plan, is we'll have a driveway connection here to Old Blue Point Road, which will be full access in and out. And then for Route 1, the only movement that will be allowed is a right turn in only. So there will not be allowed any exiting traffic onto Route 1. As Jay said in his introduction, we don't know that that's how it's going to play out, but I'm trying to give you an idea that that's probably the way that it's trending. And as George mentioned, we're currently doing counts on the light at Old Blue Point Road, and there'll probably be some work required there that George is willing to contribute with. So after that meeting on Friday, Jamel and I tossed the idea of tabling this meeting tonight. And we didn't want to do that because, as George mentioned, he's
And we didn't want to do that because, as George mentioned, he's got his tenants ready to go. We have our D.E.P. permit that's been under review. We have, we think a pretty reasonable timeframe to conclude the traffic solution. So we'd like to be back before you one more time with our D.E.P. permit and DOT permit in hand. And so, what I wanted to do is to use tonight's meeting to hammer out all the other details, which are important, that don't relate to traffic, and there are some overlap with stormwater, but, so I'm going to go through some details here. To answer Jay's question, the proposed patio seating is included in the Wall Street parking requirements. And neither restaurant planned on any customer standing or waiting areas. George mentioned this, we're happy to contribute to the Route 1 sidewalk. And again, I'm not too, for your purposes and Jamelle's, I'm not going to go through every item in his memo, I'm just going to go through the ones that I think require the board's input. I don't understand the request on page two. "To provide directional signage markers shall be utilized in diagonal parking lot arrangements. Directional markers shall be added to the one-way portions." And that's referring to this area here, which is, this is one-way traffic coming in this direction. Right here, we have a sign that says, "Do not enter." So beyond that, I don't know, are you talking about pavement striping, or arrows on the pavement? I don't know. We'll do whatever you want, I just don't know what it is. Or what the board would look for us to do.
Yeah, he can give you a quick answer on that, go ahead.
Paved markers will be good.
Okay. Is the board comfortable with that?
If staff is.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. I'll go down to the next slide. It says, "There appears to be a conflict between proposed snow storage areas along the property, frontage along Route 1, and proposed plantings. The applicant should be prepared to discuss this with the board." So what we're showing on Route 1, these are street trees, and then these are hydrangeas and perennials and a shrub bed. And then this area right here is a lawn area. And then similar here, you've got a small amount of shrub beds and a lawn area here. We're showing the snow storage in the lawn areas and not in the planting beds. And we did that on purpose. I don't think we want to propose snow storage in planting beds, but typically, a lawn area, in my opinion, is an adequate location for that purpose.
Any other items you want to point out?
Should I just go through, and then you can take them up in one time? Okay, we'll do it that way. George mentioned the requested waiver relief from the five-foot landscape strips along the sidewalk in the building. So we have, as Andy showed, we have a covered canopy in this location here that would prevent that. And in these areas here, we have the patios, and what, I was surprised to see this in the comments again, because Ashley, when she was here at the sketch plan presentation, presented her idea or vision to use planters in those areas instead of a, an actual landscape strip. And we all thought that the board was on board with that, but that's something I'd like to hear from when I, when I conclude. There was a request to provide a traffic calming device at this crosswalk, which is no longer really relevant, because the sidewalk, we don't know where it's going to be built. We're providing an INLU fee for it. So we don't know where a sidewalk would, would connect, or where it would be. So I don't think that requirement or request to provide a raised crosswalk is applicable with the sidewalk going away on Route 1. The other comment was right here, was, the request was to replace this concrete block retaining wall with an element that complements the design of the main structure. So George mentioned to it, it's something that you're not going to see. And it's very low in profile, and it's, it's not cinder blocks, it'll be a decorative, you know, you've seen them around, like a split-face, stone kind of appearance. And so we're proposing to leave that as we had originally submitted. And the other thing, let's see. Boy, that's hard to see, but I'll try to explain it. So, the comments, ask for, so what we propose in this area, in this area, and around the dumpsters, these two are exterior storage areas for assorted materials to support the restaurants. Recyclables, deliveries, et cetera, that would be stored outside at certain times of the year. And then the enclosure around the dumpster, we propose it as chain-linked with vinyl slats. And we saw Jamelle's comment, and we thought it made sense. And so what we're proposing to do is to change all of those from chain-linked to a decorative cedar fence, six feet high with a nice lattice on the top to give the fence some detail. And to also, this is the part that's hard to see, but I think you can visualize. The transformer is located here, not in the 15 by 15-foot area, but adjacent to it. So what we would do is extend the cedar fence down, so the transformer would be, would be behind it. And so it wouldn't be visible from this area of the project, and we think that's an improvement to the project. And the last item I'll mention is the request to propose a wooden guardrail here in this location, so that snow is not deposited in the ponds. So we need some area right here, adjacent to the pavement, it's more like 20 feet, George, that, but it would be a physical barrier here, so that snow would not be pushed into the ponds themselves. So I will include that, conclude there, and ask for feedback on the items I request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have public comment on this item tonight. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak relating to this item? If you could just provide your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Scott Berube, I live at 684 U.S. Route 1, resident for 10 years, deep contributor to the community. And my property abuts this property, and we are talking about three sides of my property being affected by this project. This is where I live, you can share this with the people.
If you could do me a favor, and try to just hold it up at the podium, rather than...
Yeah, if you can share that.
All right. Try to do your explanation for everyone here to see.
So, I don't object to a project. First, I want to thank the D.E.P. and the DOT for letting me know about it. I'm deeply disappointed in Jay, Jamelle, and Angela for not including me in Friday's meeting, or telling me about it, especially since I went to the DOT meeting and expressed my concerns verbally, in person, and in writing. I don't object to the project, George has been nice enough to let me know about it, but I do object to the project the way it's set. My first, biggest objection is the entryway. Whether it's right-turn exit, entry only, or not, that is very close to my bedroom windows. So my properties, you see in that picture, I have four bedroom windows that are four feet from the property line. Okay? Four feet. That's the sound of a Harley-Davidson at 8:30 at night taking off, multiple times, at a restaurant. That's the sound of a plow at 3:30 in the morning in the winter, doing its duty to clear that up before businesses have to open. That's my property right next door. I objected to restaurants on this project. I wish I had been given an opportunity, Jay, to speak up earlier, but I hadn't, and I didn't even know about it. And I've been told that you guys are driving the two restaurants. So I'm asking the planning board tonight to please reconsider this project, to scale it back to one restaurant. Reason being, if we scale back to one restaurant, you don't need 85 parking spaces, which covers almost all of this territory with impervious surface. Okay? Right now, the neighbor, just two years ago, stripped all the land next to mine that I already have flooding in my backyard, where before I had none. The other concerns I have is noise pollution, light pollution, and air pollution. Diesel trucks, starting and stopping, that's 300 starts and stops a day, next to my windows, where before there were none. I ask the planning board to please have these people go back, reassess, two restaurants. My first concern, I will repeat, is the entryway. I am requesting that the entryway be put at the southernmost part of the property, which shouldn't be a very hard thing to do. We don't need cars exiting and entering four to seven feet from my window. I have the right to breathe fresh air in July and keep my windows open, just like you people do. Jibber, jibber, jibber. That's the cigarette smoke coming from the patio next to my bedroom windows at 8:30 on a Friday night, after I've given to this community all I have, and I'm trying to get some sleep on a Friday night. You can tell I'm passionate about this, because no one came and asked for my input to put an outside restaurant patio right next to my bedroom windows. They didn't ask me about the 40 parking spaces that would go right next to my bedroom windows, and my back window. They didn't ask me about the revolving traffic around the five or seven properties that exist right now in that area. No one came to me and asked, "Hey, Scott might have had a good idea. Put the entry at the southern end, move the building over a little, cut down on the parking spaces, build a buffer. Let's not have an outdoor patio on that side next to the residence." That's what I'm asking you, three things. One, move the entry down to the southern end. Two, no outside patio, actually, two, only one restaurant instead of two, and certainly not the patio that's included. And, and three, to move the building so that the entryway can be at the southern part. So there's a lot of work to be done, there's a lot of work that's already been done. A lot of people are excited, except for me and my neighbors. None of us are excited about this. There's, planning board members, just so you know, there's already five restaurants in the immediate area, and there's a huge one going across the street. On top of the five plus one, there's two food service places already existing, Pine Tree Food and Lobster Shop. We don't need two restaurants in this project, I'll take one. Don't forget about the greasy, smokestack smell that I have to smell all, every night, through my open windows, from now until September. I have the right to breathe fresh air, to have peace, and to have, to be able to live next to a neighbor in good standing. All of our neighbors, you wouldn't even know we existed. There's no loud noises, there's no emissions, there's no lighting. We are very, very good residents of this town. So I'm asking you one more time, and I very much thank you for this opportunity, that move that entry to the southern end, do not have the circulating traffic. If you only have one restaurant, you don't need circulating traffic. The only thing driving all the negatives of this whole thing is the two restaurants. We don't need it. So, that being said, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? Seeing now I'm going to close the public comment section. And who would like this one first?
Oh, sure.
Robin.
All right. So, I guess I'll start with the project first. So, Will, can you remind me, or George, can you remind us where snow storage, you want to put it in the front, on the lawn? Correct?
Yeah, there's an area here along the side, an area here, an area here.
Okay. You know, you want it nowhere near your, your stormwater infrastructure. Otherwise, you're going to pay the cost in long-term, in annual maintenance of the four bay, and what you have there, kind of a thing. So I would rethink putting it there, but thank you for putting a guardrail or some other traffic protection system in, that's really important. I think, as far as Mr. Berube's concerns, it looks like the building is already as far away from his parcel as possible. I don't know, maybe you could put some more trees or something along the side?
Excuse me, excuse me, public comment is over. Thank you.
The other thing, the other thing...
Sir, you're out of order.
Sir.
Will?
The other thing the board should be aware of is there's a six-foot stockade fence currently along Mr. Berube's entire property line.
Right, yeah.
And along Route 1, there's a, there's a mature row of arborvitae trees.
That's right.
That further buffer his property.
Okay. And I just want to say thank you so much for talking with the landowner to give Old Point Road access. I know when you were in before, we sort of planted the idea, and you didn't really want to, but I think that's, that's, that's huge. You guys have done a tremendous amount. And I also appreciate you giving the staff the kudos that they deserve for, for working with you all, and I, and as much as I understand Mr. Berube's passion and frustration, I think it's, I think it's something that we all need to think about, who our neighbors are, kind of a thing. I've been a resident of Scarborough now for 20 years, I rented for 10 years before I purchased a place. And living on Route 1, unfortunately, you're going to get the Harleys going up and down Route 1 regardless of... So anyway, Will, thank you so much for, for continuing to work, and I know it's probably, is it Paul who's working with them? Or are you part of this project team too? I saw Paul Ostrowski's name on the listing.
He's the stamping engineer on the project manager.
So can you answer some stormwater questions for me?
I can try, I know what watershed.
All right. What watershed are we in? All right, I'll give you the meatball first. I think I saw that, Scarborough River, right?
Yeah.
What are, what are the stormwater issues here?
The only issue I'm aware of is that we are having trouble meeting the peak out in this area here. But we, I spoke to Paul this afternoon.
Can you show me the area one more time, Will? Sorry.
Right here.
Okay, yep.
Out here. Because the land kind of breaks, most of it's coming this way, but there's a little bit towards Route 1. We are having trouble meeting that study point.
Okay.
But we, we can adjust the grading to make that happen, so that we, I glossed over the stormwater comments, other than this issue about the protection of the pond, because we're comfortable we can meet all of those comments that Woodard, Cover, and Angela have made.
And can you just remind me, are you doing curb and gutter at all, or is it all sort of like sheet flow? You're not doing any catch basins or stuff?
Yes, we are.
You are going to?
Yeah, it's all, it's all catch basins.
So you could potentially regrade to a catch basin, and put it to where it needs to go. So I encourage you to, to do that, to make sure you dot all your i's and cross all your t's.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that. The five-foot landscape strip, I know you had a question on that, Will, and I know that Ashley had said, "What about plants and the light?", kind of a thing. So I'm not going to address that, because I know that other board members will. Replacing the retaining wall, I know that you mentioned that one of those things too. Is, there's, there's, just to be sure, there's no retaining wall there now? It would be something that you proposed due to the difference in elevation between the abutter?
Yeah, there's a low point right there.
Okay, and is that the State Farm that's on that side?
Yeah, it is.
And you're working with the abutter to make sure that the facade is appropriate for, for both? To me, I think that is, that is super important, is dealing with... Um, to me, I think that is, that is super important, is dealing with the person who has to look at it the most, kind of a thing. So, thank you for, for doing that. And if there is any other way that we can buffer Mr. Berube's property, whether it's with, with, uh, arborvitae and the, and the like, that would be, that would be very much appreciated. And I, I think that's, that's about all I have, but thank you so much for the progress that you have done so far. Thank you for your approach, um, in, in working with the town. And I will pass it on to my colleagues.
Thank you.
Yeah. Rachel, please connect.
Yeah, um, one of your questions was around the planters on the outside patio, and I do recall the discussion, uh, and I had no problems with the planters, and I don't recall that anybody else did, but both can speak for themselves. I, I do know that one question I had was, what's the light, what's the spacing of the sidewalk outside of those patio areas? People going to be able to, to walk down and round? Is that going to be wide enough?
Yeah, so looking at the screen, and it's mirrored on either side.
Yeah.
So, we're going to have a nice, low, like, three-foot-tall, uh, black picket metal fence, so that you, uh, exit the restaurant into a, uh, enclosed space. And then, the sidewalk, if you were parked here, you would walk around it, on the, around the outside of it, to the entries.
And there's enough, what's the width?
Six feet wide.
Six feet, okay, good.
That's quite...
Um, I, would it be possible, I, I heard Mr. Berube's concern about, uh, smoking out on the patio, would it be possible, uh, to ask the patrons not to smoke?
We'll consider...
Out on that patio?
We, we need to talk to our tenants, but we'll be...
Yeah, I, I, I understand, but it would be...
We hear the concern, and we'll...
That would be, that would be helpful, I think. Uh, what are the hours of operation? Because I also heard a concern about early and late and hours, and I, I understand this really isn't, you know, part of it, but I, we do need to think about...
It's an absolute valid question, Rachel. Uh, I believe they'll probably be open or starting their businesses somewhere around ten, ten-thirty. They will not be serving breakfast, and that's one of the issues I think that Maine DOT had with the traffic, there'll be no morning traffic. Uh, but I assume that they'll probably stay open till ten, eleven o'clock at night. These are family establishments, and as far as the smoking and stuff, uh, I can't commit to that. My tenants are all lined up. I can make a suggestion. Uh, one of the tenants has been my tenant for twenty-something years. He's got ten different locations in the state of Maine, and, uh, I will, I will do my best. I'm a non-smoker, I understand that. And, uh, I don't know exactly, uh, how far it is to, uh, Mr. Berube's house from where our building is on the patio. That's why I bought, uh, Mr. Purvis's property, so that I could increase that buffer. Uh, but again, I have no problem. I, I did make sure that Mr. Berube knew that, uh, the project's coming forward. It hasn't been a secret. We've been working, uh, for about three years on it, and I'd be more than willing to sit...
Four weeks ago.
And I'd be more than willing to, uh, sit down with him or anybody else in the neighborhood, uh, to resolve whatever, whatever issues they have. Uh, I'm a uniter, not a divider. Thank you very much.
Comment on the smoking. It might be regulated that it's not allowed by the state of Maine. You can't smoke in a restaurant.
Exactly.
But can you smoke? I, I'm just wondering about the rules. I don't, I'm not, I don't know what the rules are on, on the patio.
We'll check.
Not if you're, I don't believe you can if you're serving food.
And the employees go up past and smoke and cigarette breaks? It permeates over to the next property?
Okay.
Or do you smoke cigarettes?
I have, I do have...
Sir, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to, I'm going to say this once, Mr. Berube. I would like to hear no more outbursts out of you. I would appreciate it. If you continue to make these outbursts, I will ask you to leave the meeting. Thank you.
Having had restaurants for forty-four years, you're not allowed to smoke out on the patios, and you got to be twenty-five feet from a window.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. Uh, and I, uh, I, I also want to, want to say that I've recalled the discussion from, that, that we had initially, and, um, at the time, and it's, that's continued, I'm very impressed with the commitment you folks have to, to improving the area of Scarborough, uh, and to, to really bringing a, uh, a building like this, a facility like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger.
Sure. Um, at the last, um, meeting, last time you were here, I raised a question about the entrance. I was wondering why it wasn't in the middle versus where it's located. Considering now that you're going to be thinking about an entrance off of the old Blue Point Road, is there, what's your thoughts about maybe moving that Route One entrance further south?
We can't do it, because the, uh, the nature of the, the grades are that it, it drops pretty considerably. And for right here to right here is about a seven-foot grade difference, and so we just can't make that work, so it really has to be about where we've got it. Just the way the, the grading on the site is and the grading in Route One.
Okay. Um, I, I assume also, your, um, your parking plan that you have presented to us will change slightly when you've taken into consideration coming in off of Old Blue Point Road?
Uh, yeah, probably. I mean, it's going to affect this, this opening right here. I don't think that you'll see anything different in here or in here, but maybe right in this area. I could see some geometry change in there.
What about buffering on the, uh, again, dealing with Old Blue Point Road, some sort of buffering to those properties, the three properties of private?
I, I think he's referencing the backside of the Mr. Berube and the other properties.
Oh, you talked about this area here.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll certainly consider that.
What's that now? Is it, is it, is it just grass or metal or...
Yes.
Trees.
Roger, uh, I've taken into consideration what my neighbors want. I tried to develop it on this plan with the help of, uh, Andy and, uh, Will. Uh, as far as the road from DOT, that was kind of a, something that came up during our meetings. I will do whatever I can to address those issues, issues. The other thing that is not shown on the plan is I'm probably going to have to have a sign. I own two-hundred feet on Old Blue Point Road.
Yes.
Okay? I'm probably going to have to have a sign, because we're going to, hopefully, the traffic will be making a left or right out, out of the old Blue Point Road. Okay? So, I...
Yeah, right in this area.
Right in that area there.
Yes.
And that was part of the acquisitions that I've made.
So, the, what's the likelihood, when you, um, when you do put that road in, that it's going to be right close by the existing residents? Or will it be more in the center of that?
No, no, because, uh, I've made no mystery of this. Uh, I do own a lot of property along Route One. I intend on coming back in a year or so, uh, building another ten thousand square foot building on this property for my daughter.
Okay.
Uh, as she had indicated to you, and I think that, uh, Sedco has worked with us, we do a lot of, uh, she does, uh, her design work is outside the country, and we want to invite people to come in, rather than, she's got a major showroom in the Atlanta Mart. We'd like to bring those people here and do business and write orders. So, uh, I don't want someone not to know what my intentions are. Uh, I've said this three years ago, that, and I owe quite a bit of property on Route One to the right of the old Blue Point Road, probably close to fifteen-hundred feet, uh, all the way up to, but not including the corner of Church Street. So, I'm, I'm here to stay. I'm here to make a change in that area. And, uh, I hope to work with not only the boards, my neighbors, and, uh, do the best possible job that we can do.
Um, just for my own benefit, um, in Bill Bray's document, he refers to a high turnover sit-down restaurant. What, what does that mean? People turn over like in an hour or something like that, or...
I, I, I don't know if you've ever had the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Bray?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, you kind of listen, and don't ask a whole lot of questions?
Okay.
I can't, I, I, I don't know, I've had a restaurant, uh, I'm not a fast, I don't, these restaurants are not fast food.
Okay.
They're pretty elegant restaurants.
So, if I could, that high turnover, that, that's a definition, I believe, coming out of the ITE, the Institute for Traffic Engineers Model, uh, or, or, uh, manual, I should say. Um, and so, there's different type of restaurants, so it doesn't necessarily mean a, you know, a fast food restaurant, or necessarily a chain restaurant. I don't know exactly what the definition is.
That's national data, that's national data that they use.
Right. So...
And lastly, I, I assume there's going to have to be some sort of signage or something at the Route One, Old Blue Point Road.
I had indicated, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go on.
Roger, yeah, I indicated, because of the chain and the change in the site plan, uh, we would definitely have to have a, a, a sign on Route One, and I had said earlier, on the old Blue Point Road. But it will be done in good taste.
Okay. Um, this reminds me a little bit of the, um, the None Such Brewery. This is a TBC zone, where there's residential properties close by, and, you know, mixed use, commercial, residential zone. I'm all set.
Thank you, Roger. Um, so, I think, and my colleagues have covered quite a bit of distance here on this, I'd ask the planning, um, staff whether or not they feel like they've had either all, most of their questions answered at this point, or have any remaining outstanding items that they feel they need guidance from the planning board on?
I think I'm okay.
Seems like we've touched on the big ones. Um, you know, there's still more information to be gathered on traffic and what that ultimate design looks like, but I think we've touched on the big ones, and...
So, yeah, with that said, knowing that there's an alternate plan that's probably going to be developed once your traffic numbers come in, um, you know, I'll reserve any of the further questions I have, considering the extent to which the rest of this board has already covered most of it. So, um, with that said, I think we're all looking forward to seeing what that traffic numbers indicate, um, and seeing what that next, next design plan looks like. I would encourage you to work with your butters, um, just to make sure that, um, they are getting, you know, a good amount of buffering, um, that you, you attempt to satisfy, um, you know, as many concerns as you reasonably can, uh, considering, you know, that you are in a commercial district here, and, uh, but there's nothing wrong with being good neighbors, so...
Chairman McGee, I will meet with the butters again, uh, and see whatever other issues that I can resolve, uh, and I'll report back to, to Jamal and Jay and Angela. And the other thing is that I, I have a sense of what's going to come out of the Department of Transportation and the work that we're going to have to do. So, that's why I, I did say about the light, that I think is going to be, have to be a signal there, and I know that I'm going to have to, uh, be responsible for a portion of that, probably a, do a third, a third with the town, a third with the, uh, Department of Transportation, or maybe there's some grants that are available, but I will be looking into that and, uh, moving forward along those lines. But this isn't just for my project. I, I think it's an exciting time for the town of Scarborough. This area is going to be developed, uh, and I hope to be, play a part in that, but I do also believe we've got to address the traffic on Route One for the long term. And I want to work with everybody to do that, so that we can prosper like every other community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nick?
Yes.
Mr. Berube, if I heard him correctly, he alluded to the fact that, um, he, he said the planning board, not the planning department drove the two restaurants?
That's what I heard as well.
Yeah. I think that should be clarified, is...
No, that was the applicant's proposal. The planning board did not drive that.
Okay. I think it's important to have the actual facts out there.
Yeah, that's a, that was a applicant-driven decision.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying, and thank you for directing that, Roger. Appreciate it.
Nick, I'd just like to ask the applicant if they feel like they've gotten all the information they need from the planning board in order for you to move forward with a concise plan? Do you have any other questions?
I think so. You're good with the five, with the planters.
Well, and I, I would push that back to staff, because, you know, I was the one too, saying, "I'm good with all of what others", but also the, the facade for the stone wall, I know, you know, did I, did I overstep as far as, you know, saying, "Work with the butter", um, you know, that kind of a thing? Okay, all right.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Thanks. We'll see you in June.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Last item for the evening, Route Twelve, uh, thirteen, Bluebird's Self-Storage requests a site plan review for One Hundred Enterprise Drive, Accessors Map U-39, Lot 4701. Jamal?
Would you like to introduce this one? All right. Thank you. We got to them. So, this, uh, proposal is located at One Hundred Enterprise Drive in the Higginson Parkway Zoning District. Um, it's at the corner of Route One and Enterprise Drive, kind of a kitty corner there. Uh, the applicant's proposing a hundred and three thousand, five hundred and twenty-four square foot, three-story condition self-storage facility on Lot One in the approved Enterprise Business Park subdivision. As board members may remember, this site was subject to a recent zone change, uh, with the Town Council, that included the addition of this use permitted within the Higginson Parkway Zone. Also, this, um, this parcel is, to be included in the Higginson Parkway Zone as part of that. During the zoning change process, uh, Town Council, uh, requested significant buffering and landscaping along the lots' Route One frontage, so the board will want to make sure that this request is reflected in the site design. Any application for a site plan review, uh, up for a site plan review in the Higginson Parkway Zone requires a graphic representation of the site and building as seen from the public ways, um, so that would be Route One and Enterprise Drive. So, while the zoning ordinances, uh, provide regulations for parking, amount of parking spaces, um, for this use, uh, parking is to be determined by the planning board, uh, so the applicant should be prepared to explain why the proposed amount of parking is adequate for this use. Uh, staff, you know, along with the, uh, request for additional buffering, staff recommends that the fire lane and underdrained soil filter proposed along the southern edge of the building be modified in order to provide the required buffering, um, on Route One. Uh, staff would like to know that, you know, we're a little confused as to why the existing electric overhead wires across the site are proposed to remain, as a, the majority of Enterprise Business Park is primarily served with underground power. And staff recommends that the proposed recessed EFs be redesigned to complement the proposed windows on the building, on the building elevations. And staff also recommends that the applicant provide samples of materials, uh, to be used to ensure the materials are consistent with the town's design standards. And finally, um, you know, there's a host of staff comments. Additionally, uh, Woodard and Current and Traffic Solutions have also provided some peer review comments about general engineering, stormwater, and traffic concerns. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. And, uh, I'd like to welcome the applicant. Please, uh, state your name and...
Uh, good evening. My name is Rick Lundbourn. I'm the project engineer from Boston O'Neill. Uh, with me tonight is Bill Goodison from Bluebird Storage, Cell Storage, to answer any questions about the facility, its operations, or, uh, questions of that nature. Also, Brendan McNamara, the, the building designer, is here as well to talk about the facade treatments, and then the building itself. And Stuart Mitchell, who will be overseeing the construction of the, uh, project as well, is here to talk about any kind of construction-related questions that you folks might have, if, if you do. I also have, um, renderings, uh, to help satisfy some of the comments, obviously. It's more just to help further discussion this evening. I also have it digitally, so if you can project it as well. So, we're going to hand those out right now. So, as Jamal had summarized, the proposal's taking place on Map U-39, Lot 4701, One Hundred Enterprise Drive. Uh, it has been rezoned to the Higginson Parkway Zone, um, and currently, the lot is vacant, has about three-point-seven-nine acres. It's wooded, has some lawn areas, and some wetland on it. Existing improvements, as Jamal noted, there's a power line easement that runs from US... Existing improvements, as Jamal noted, there's a power line easement that runs from US Route One all the way over to the daycare facility. It's the first lot on the east in Enterprise Drive. There's also an existing power line that runs through there. We'll work with CMP to remove that if it's unnecessary, but it looks to be going to another user, and that's why it's remaining, and we have to consult with them first before we propose it being eliminated. Also, there is a platoonous sidewalk right now today that runs along Enterprise Drive, and it's inside of a construct, an easement for both stormwater and that sidewalk along that side of the development. And it has water and sewer available on-site, and electrical we would be pulling from the Route One side into the, into a transformer pad located at the corner of the building. So, we're proposing a three-story facility. Right now, Bluebird's operating in eight different locations, or this would be the first location in Maine, and they're looking to continue to expand in the southern Maine area. This building in particular has 35,088 square foot footprint, and an overall gross square footage for the building of 103,524 square feet over the three floors. It's an internal storage facility, so there's no external storage at all. Everything is stored inside the building. You know, obviously have internal lifts, elevators, and the light to get to the upper floors. There's about 650 storage units internal, and all the lighting inside the building is on sensors, sort of like if you go to a Target and you walk through the grocery aisles, the individual refrigerator lights are off until you walk down the aisle. That's how the lights inside this building operate. As you walk down the hallway to your unit, the lights turn on and turn off as you proceed down the hallway to help save energy. Exterior lighting is all dark skies compliant, and the building itself will be sprinklered, fire-alarmed, have a Knox box, and keypad entry system. Obviously, they're storing people's goods, climate-controlled, so it has an alarm system and security cameras throughout the building and on property. Because everything is stored inside and it's a locked facility, there are no gates necessary, no fencing required. Again, there's not gonna be any external storage. They don't allow tractor-trailer deliveries. It doesn't fit with what they're trying to accomplish. It tends to drive people to do things like get big lots of things and store them here, and that's not what they're trying to do. This is storage for folks like you or me that have things that they just wanna have in a slightly nicer storage facility than just the old straight-line, wrinkled tin-type storage facilities that aren't climate-controlled. You know, you can get some property damage from storing in there if you're not, if it's not the right type of stuff. So the hours of operation for this facility will be Monday through Friday, six to eight, Saturday, six to six, and Sunday, six o'clock to four. And it's staffed from nine o'clock in the morning until the close of each business day, and that's all through the week, Saturdays and Sundays included. This is generally a pretty low-impact type of a project for a community. Obviously, there's no school, children living here, there's not generally a need for ambulance services. It's really just, um, police and fire service at worst, and generally that's not necessary either. It's a pretty benign use. We did get comments from Jamal and Jay and the staff, as well as Mr. Bray and Woodward and Curran. And I can, I'll walk through some of that, but I'm not gonna belabor the point with you folks on all of those things. Right now, we have, I'll just finish a roundout of the site. The site does propose 31 parking spaces throughout, and an additional two for box trucks that the facility will operate. One of the services that Bluebird offers its customers is pickup at your home or a location of your choosing, and they'll come and bring the things you're storing here. And typically, they'll have trucks that they share between different facilities, so they would park those in one of the two long box truck spaces off the back. The proposal is to have some underdrained soil filters. There's one here adjacent, on the north side of the lot, adjacent to where basically customers that are going into the office will park, and the main driveway end. It has a four-bay on the other side of the turnaround here that takes stormwater from the roof, and two of the three catch basins in the back paved area. And that is routed under that turnaround area via two culverts. I'll show you that on the grading drainage plant. So, these are basically hydraulically connected by two culvert pipes that have a larger capacity than the inlet pipe. So as the water fills up, that four-bay just goes through those pipes and keeps going into the underdrained soil filter portion of that structure. The other side is really only taking about a third of the roof and one catch basin, and it has a manhole inline preceding the catch basin before it goes to that other underdrained soil filter. So the sediment removal needs aren't as high as for the other one where it's taking the bulk of the stormwater from the back area. Otherwise, we're proposing all the utilities to be underground. Again, transformer pad located off that corner, the southeast corner of the building. And, um, also bringing, proposing to have gas come in off the back corner of the building as well, phone and, and phone and cable service as well. Water and sewer would come in off of the existing stubs on Enterprise Drive near the main driveway. So, briefly go through some of the comments and things from staff and the peer reviewers. There was a comment regarding, well, obviously the renderings that I just handed out, which are here. So, this, this rendering would be looking at the corner of the building as you're driving back out Enterprise Drive towards Route One, the blue car is headed towards Route One. And this would be looking at it, at the building from, across Route One as you're coming down, and you can see where the signage would be located up on the right-of-way of the slip ramp. So, we will end up rolling that into the plan submissions in the future, and that will, again, like this, depict, depict the proposed landscaping as, to match what the landscape architect has developed. With regards to the parking, the question regarding the number of parking spaces, this is not a, what you would call a high-traffic, get-one-time type of a use. Generally, what Bluebird's found is for a facility of this size and any of their other locations that they have, this number of parking spaces is more than adequate. And to put more would just be adding impervious surface to the site for the sake of adding impervious surface at that point. They generally don't see that all these spaces would be full at once, and many of their other locations that are of the same size or even slightly larger. So we're pretty satisfied that what's being proposed will be more than adequate for this project. So, yes, there is, and then the, there is, like a number of the other applicants this evening, there's this area on this project where there is not the required landscape buffer. That is along the east side of the building where the unloading areas are, and that, in effect, is why it's paved to the building. The idea is if you were backing in a pickup truck or something, you would stop if the wheel stops and be able to still unload onto a paved sidewalk area adjacent to the building. The doors, there's sliding doors under the canopy awnings that you can basically roll a cart in and take your goods into your storage locker through there. We would ask that the board consider to allow us to maintain that in this way, but the applicant is open to working with you folks as well. There was another comment regarding making sure that there is no, no storage that takes place in the underdrained soil filters, and as Ms. Saunders discussed with the previous applicant, there's a good reason for that, 'cause you don't wanna sediment up, you know, your stormwater feature that you just built. So we are proposing along the driveway end from the sidewalk all the way down past the box truck parking areas, split rail fence to, so they don't push snow into that area. And again, on this side, the south end adjacent to that other underdrained soil filter, we are proposing, again, some split rail fence to dissuade folks from pushing snow into the underdrained soil filters. There was a question about temporary sidewalks during construction. Obviously, if we're gonna be that close to the existing platoonous sidewalk, it's probably gonna get damaged while they're putting the foundations in and things. So either we will, you know, reroute them right adjacent to that in an area that's safe during construction, or work with the town to find a location closer to the street, possibly on the shoulder temporarily while the foundation's going in before they can move it back up the hill. But we'll discuss that with staff and come to a conclusion. So, just to give you a handle on the grade, it's pretty darn steep, and there's that drainage swale here that is an existing in that easement that currently is taking stormwater from the bulk of the east side of Enterprise Drive as it comes down through the area and the watershed, and directing it to the large detention basin on the other side of Enterprise Drive. So, that grading is really hard to overcome right there. It's kinda an unmovable feature of the site, so to speak. Regarding the fire truck access on the side of the building, the south end, right here, we will look at slotting that in as staff has discussed and pulling that underdrained soil filter over to allow for a better vegetated buffer up on Route One. You know, frankly, if the fire department has decided that that isn't necessary, then, you know, we can accommodate and, and work with the town to make that a better buffer. So, though, otherwise, that brings us to stormwater management. I did reviews, Woodward and Curran's comments, I have to give them a call. We received the comments towards the end of the week last week, and I haven't had a chance to catch up with them. I just wanna go through some of those comments with them. I think some of them may be holdovers from a previous review letter, and I'm not sure if some of them, that, you know, we have, we can come into terms with some of them, 'cause some of them don't relate to this project. Some of them do, and they're easy enough to answer. A lot of them are just technique questions and comments, so if we have a conversation, I'm sure we can work it out. None of it was anything that was impossible to tackle. And again, lighting, you got, there was a request for cut sheets, so we will provide those prior to the next meeting. And again, I will let Brendan discuss the architecture and signage. He did also bring with us in the handouts this evening a copy of the sign we would end up using. This sign is actually from the Hookset facility. So you have a 16-foot height limitation, so the brick base will be cut down. This sign in Hookset was on a slope, obviously we'll have that. The part that says BIF varies in field, or verify in field, that'll be shorter, and the whole sign will maintain its adherence to your sign requirements. Yeah, so otherwise, I think that about sums it up on our end, and we'll be addressing all the staff comments and peer review comments and getting that, those responses back to staff. So I'll let Brendan talk a little bit about the building and go from there. So, I don't know what you wanna use for a presentation, but the plan, the elevation views are at the end.
Okay, great. Okay, Brendan McNamara, I'm a residential designer from Elliott, Maine. And even though the drawings here are done by J.S.N. engineers in Portsmouth, where I work with Wrigley, I worked originally with Bluebird to come up with a generalized thematic concept of the building, so it could be buildings that could be replicated across New England that in some manner reflected New England architecture, so they could be, have a chance of being approved through towns like Scarborough and Manchester and London Derry and towns of that nature. And so, and what, that is what we have here, although remembering that it is at its heart, it's a big three-story climate-controlled warehouse. It's, you know, what the building wants to be is a rectangular box that has no windows in it at all, and the windows that are added are there for principally where there's the office, and then to break up the mass of the building. But that's the battle of form and function that we have with this particular building. So I know that you had some questions about the possibility of increasing the number of what are essentially, we call them faux windows, but they are, it's a real window set into a blank space. So it's not, it's just that there's a wall immediately behind the window. They appear as a normal window, and they are, but they're a window to nowhere. And also, we did bring in just some examples of, so we are using the more and brick on the base and the water table area on the, on the end towers. But then the rest of the building is essentially the ethos, which I'm hoping that you're familiar with what that actually is, but there's an example of that down here too. There's also the example down there of the glazed blue brick, which is just an aesthetic element that goes around with the water table. But the, so the building is fully insulated, it's meant to be a very efficient building, and part of that exterior skin is, is part of that whole assembly. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
I do, well, I do have also, in the discussion of, you know, changing some of the recesses to windows, if we were to do something of that nature, then we'd be looking for some sort of rhythmic appeal going along the building. So I did do some quick examples of how that may adjust going from what you have here as an example, sort of step-by-step sort of going, well, if we, we could, if we go to more windows, then we, at the moment, you've got the choices of the breaks between recesses, pairs of windows, or, actually, quads or pairs. And then what I've shown here is if we go to more windows, then we probably just go to just the vertical pairs going along, so we remain in some sort of regular rhythm.
You have a drawing of this?
Yeah.
Just for the sake of our board discussion.
So the way I put it together was so that you could do the comparison is that, so that page one is, as it's been put in the application, and page two is sort of a state one approach, and page three is a state two. So that was really just as a matter of getting the discussion going.
Is there anyone else from your team that is wishing to present? So with that, I'll, I'll have a public comment on this, this item. So if there's anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this, please approach the podium. Name and address. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Roger, would you like to have first swing of this?
My turn again?
It is. It's a short board tonight. You can't, one of the people to pick them.
Sure, okay. I'm just kind of curious, the rendering, you know, these renderings here, is that number one on, on here?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So there will actually be some windows. Are there, are there, are, are there going to be off false windows?
At the office tower, which is here, it is a genuine office. So they are real windows. As we move away from that, they move into faux windows, which I hesitate to say because they are real windows, but they just, you know, it's like building a wall behind this window here. So we continue the monocop insulation skin behind the window, but it's, it is glass and it's aluminum. That is a window to nowhere.
I, I, I like that. I like number one. I think it looks really nice. Not sure if I have any, oh, the only other thing I guess is the landscaping along Route One. Did you touch upon that at all?
Briefly. We did do a landscaping plan and we had already proposed some landscaping along Route One. The circles with the diagonal lines towards the site, those are existing decorative trees along Route One right now today. We're proposing some infill trees and then some shrubs and whatnot along the, along that area there behind those existing trees. The sign would be in this location and this plan, we hadn't located it yet. So if we were to remove or truncate the turning and just get rid of this fire truck access here that we had put in along the side, that underdrained soil filter and everything could slide over a fair amount of distance, allow for some, well, some of the buffer, hang on a second, up here would retain its existing vegetation some more. There's a good stand of trees right in that corner. So obviously, they wouldn't have to cut that down if we're not cutting into the embankment right there. But down further towards the tire warehouse, we would be able to do a little bit more buffering.
Okay, I, I don't have any other questions. I mean, I, I think it looks really nice.
Thank you, Roger.
I'm sold.
Rachel.
Yeah, what is the distance between your parking area in the back and the boundary line of the water?
To that back corner there?
Yeah.
All right. Let's go. There, what I mean, I got, the landscaping is way at the end of the details, so I'd go back up. There is a setback called out down that side. It's, it's 15 feet in most locations except for right at that corner where you go around the corner. I would say it's probably 10 at the closest. Right now today, the tire warehouse, I would say is probably five feet down near the road a little bit. It looks like their dumpster is actually over the property line, so just for reference. But yeah, right in that corner, it looks like you're about 10 to the pavement edge, but the parking is up against the building. It's really more of a driveway. There.
So there's not going to be any snow storage?
No, there's actually, no, that's not the idea. And actually, on this site plan, we include a note regarding snow storage. We understand that we have limited snow storage locations shown. So we have added note number 10, that snow from driveways and parking areas shall be removed from the premises as necessary due to the limited room for snow storage. So obviously, they would use the snow storage locations that we have designated first, you know, at the end of this area here, down here and over, you know, over here now they don't need to use. So maybe one of the things we, we do as we slide this stuff around is we make a little bit of an expanded area down on this corner and just make sure that it has some redirection from the underdrained soil filter, so it's not just getting pushed in there. Again, we'll maintain that split rail fence too. But actually, along that back edge, it's interesting, right now, the stormwater from everything to the east kind of rolls across this property and actually bleeds over the sidewalk in a couple of spots. And if you look on the right hand of the image that I have on the screen, I have some darker green areas. Those are wet areas and I am assuming that when either the daycare was constructed or one of the last times some work was done on that power line, they filled in a accessway through here and put some cross culverts in. This, the wetland in this area to the east of the power lines actually didn't exist when Enterprise Drive was proposed initially. So that's something that's developed over time due to the culvert through that accessway not being removed, so it's kind of dammed up some water. When we do the work, we will actually remove those culverts and reestablish a hydraulic connectivity between the two areas of the smaller watershed to allow for water to get down and around and into the drainage network that goes under Enterprise Drive. But it is, we're actually proposing a swale along that back edge to redirect off-site flow down into those wet areas where they generally end up by meandering across the site.
All right, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Robin.
How many test bits did you do?
There are a number, there's one right in the middle of the underdrained soil filter. There's one kind of close to this four bay and there's one that actually lands right in the edge of the building close to where that underdrained soil filter is. And they have, none of them hit refusal per se. Actually, I take that back. The one on this side hit it down at like eight feet, a little over eight feet.
I'm more, I'm more concerned about the top soil and supporting an underdrained soil filter here.
We're going to line them. They're going to be lined, so they're all manufactured soil media inside of a poly liner.
So how many, how many square feet of wetland disturbance do you have here?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall. I know that the one in the middle is around, there is one where the building is, that's about 10,000 to 11,000 square feet. It's quite a bit and it tacks on to the other permits that came with Enterprise Drive.
So did you consider then, when you did your pre-con, your, your pre-construction flows, my brain's shutting down slightly, your pre and post, did you consider wetland?
Yes.
Controls as helping attenuate some of the flow right now? And it sounds like you also have run-on from another site.
Oh, we have a run-on from a lot of site.
Yeah.
It's actually not even all from the Enterprise Drive subdivision. It's from kind of points northeast as well. And we did use the previous designs, post-development drainage analysis as our starting point. So any improvements that they made over the pre-existing in theirs, we didn't want to impact.
Yeah.
Most importantly, we wanted to make sure that our flows leaving this site were less than what was originally.
Yeah, I think, I think you're going to have, you're going to have a tremendous challenge here with respect to stormwater. And I definitely am glad to hear that you're going to reach out to Woodward and Curran to talk with them about what they've said because I'm seeing that, have you built one of these in Maine yet? This is the first. It's apparent, unfortunately, in some of the design specifications and things. So please reach out to town staff as well and talk about what we can do to nuance this to meet the main stormwater rigs. And I apologize for being so blunt, it's just very late at night. Know what watershed you're in as well? We're, you're going to be in the Scarborough Marsh immediate area and you're, you're just going to have a lot of stormwater issues here and run-on and runoff.
There's, it's a clay site, so we're fully aware.
So when you say that you're going to remove snow stor, you're going to remove snow?
From the site.
Where's it going to go?
Wherever it's allowed to go.
Okay. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Robin. So it's, you know, what I like to do before you leave here is make sure you feel like you have a good grasp of what it is that is being expected of you, that we're still requesting, things of that nature. Is there anything in particular that you feel like you as an applicant need some more clarity on from planning board going forward?
Obviously, we're going to address like staff and peer review comments with staff and the peer review agencies, Woodward and Curran and Mr. Bray. I guess really it would be more relegated to things that deal with site amenities that aren't technical in nature. Things like the, how do you folks feel about the lack of a five-foot landscape buffer across the back of the building where basically it's a sidewalk against the building to get to those sliding doors under the canopy areas?
And I think you had provided a response earlier and it had to do with people?
Yeah.
Unloading and just kind of this usefulness of having all sidewalk there, right?
Yeah.
So whereas I don't think that came up in any of our board comments, I think we were satisfied generally with your response to staff's comments, so I didn't hear anyone begging for more landscaping in that area and assume that that's not going to be the requirement. So, yeah, the other, one thing I, I know you gave a kind of a response to this right when you started out, but the overhead power line?
Yes.
So you're saying it goes to another end user? Is that?
Appears to. Terminates, it goes from down here along the poles to a pole here and then it turns, goes this way and continues up the street.
So in order for you to drop it underground, do you need special permissions? Is it not really your responsibility to drop it underground? Is that your argument or what's your outlook on it?
Kind of have to go out there and walk up Enterprise Drive and figure out where it ends. Do it tonight if it wasn't dark, but.
Okay, so it's something that?
Consult the CMP.
Okay. And then as far as staff is concerned, is there anything that maybe we didn't get answered fully, effectively, or do you like some more guidance on in any of these areas?
Yeah, I think it's, as was noted, a lot of the issues are sort of technical in nature, but certainly I think a little more guidance in terms of the building architecture and sort of those ephes areas typically designed standards where they look for any architectural features to sort of have a, to be an architectural feature more than just sort of a, but, so really look to the board if you're comfortable with what was proposed or continuing conversation about how to maybe accentuate or articulate those as either windows or maybe it's some other type of treatment. So I guess that would be something that would be helpful, have a little guidance on, I'm sure.
I think I heard Roger comment that he was okay with the building architecture. I don't know if.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the colors there and I'm trying to figure out what color goes with what feature.
The, this isn't, the ephes is a, unfortunately, this is a stock standard ephes sample. It doesn't reflect the gray that's been used. So the actual color is on the ephes, there's two forms of gray. It's a mid-bray and a dark gray to accentuate. So all the window recess features are actually a different color. So it's, the general building is a mid-bray and then where there's a recess, it's a dark gray.
Is there trim around the win, frames around the windows, looks like?
In the actual windows, they're possessed of their own frame that they're set directly into either the brick.
And, and the, those colors would be?
They, yes, silver. It's a silver and metal frame. An aluminum frame window. And all the brickwork is the more old, I think it's actually very common in Scarborough as well.
I think it would be important to see the, the actual colors, samples of the actual colors. And, you know, this, this building looks fine, but it also looks pink. So I'd like to, I'd like to see what the whole color scheme is.
No, that's fine. We can bring echo samples of it.
Robin, do you have any?
I guess I, I just want to go back to the whole idea of the windows that are just, they're going to be there, but they're not going to be able, you're not going to be able to see in or out?
Inside all these windows here, you know, is, is actual storage.
Yeah.
Would be counter to the nature of reservation of storage.
Sure. No, I get it. Sorry, I don't have any burning.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think that, I mean, I think you indicated you're dealing with a big metal box that wants to be a big metal box that you're trying to make it look a little prettier, so I think given that, given that, it's okay and seen worse, so.
It's a ringing endorsement.
Not to, not trying to.
The renderings, the one thing that, I suppose.
And, and don't get me wrong, I don't think it's the.
Yeah, well, it's more the fact that there, there is actually, the renderings reflect it better is that the features aren't flat features, you know, so the brick, the brick pilasters are brick pilasters that are dimensioned to a full-size brick going up. So they, everything is within the expected dimension, but the, the soffit overhang of the main towers is five feet high and it's hanging out. I think it's four, six, I mean, they are, they're big, you know, it's, it's, they're, they're not sort of mean little aspects. And then like the, the edge of the parapet at the top of the ephes, I mean, that overhang is large enough to allow the, the piles of brickwork to come up and to be landing, so it's, it's, it's not like a Walmart building. I mean, even though, I mean, on one hand, it is a Walmart building, I think it's a big square box, you know, of which we've applied a generous amount of detail, but no detail is mean in the essence of it, you know, it's generous in volume and size.
So Nick, I guess I would say that, you know, if it's a box that wants to be a box, you've done a really good job of breaking it up and adding interest and, and that kind of a thing. I mean, it could be just a warehouse, you know, like a metal warehouse and you have done a, I think, a, a very good job of.
Thank you. And there's plenty of them that, that are.
Well, thank you for not bringing that up.
And the thing is, of course, as soon as you see self-storage, you go, oh my God, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be blue or it's going to be orange and so.
No, this is good.
Thank you. So I think for the architectural, I think the board's generally satisfied with it being presented here. Is there any other outstanding items that you guys might think you want some direction on?
Nope.
That said, thank you. It was a good presentation. I'm glad we got you in this evening. It was, even, even with you taking the delay of game and we still got you in, so.
It was the right thing to do. I mean, you know, those guys wanted to get going and we were waiting for a member of our team, so I'm glad it worked out. I want to say thanks for your time. I know it's getting late, so.
We will see you again. Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, so we are to staff comments.
Have a few. Staff has started, Scarborough Downs Crossword Holdings team has submitted a pre-application or did submit a pre-application review to staff and to peer reviewers, so staff and our peer reviewers provided for phase one of the Scarborough Downs, southern portion there, and so staff did work with the team to provide comments on their design and they should be submitting to full site plan very soon. And we do have a MYR for the Mitchell Hill Estate subdivision that needs to be signed by board members today.
Okay.
Please do that before we take off. by board members, so please do that before we take off.
And then I have, next is the administrative amendment report, is there any report there? You know, administrative correspondence, I know we received a letter regarding the public safety building, which I believe every member here has received, so I love that. Any other correspondence that anyone has to report? Planning board comments?
Well done, Mr. Chair, getting us through such an aggressive agenda, and staff as well, thank you all.
Staff especially, you guys have been working really hard lately, we've noticed, so. Good job. And Karen, again, thank you for being here this evening to help contribute to the efforts of Scarborough, so I've got adjournment next, does anyone want to make that?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All of you. Thank you, folks, appreciate it.